All right, we are recording. You're ready to go.
All right, we're hearing the dinner whistle in the background, it means it's six o'clock, so I'll call a meeting order here. And it looks like we've got everybody on board, so we've got a quorum, we're going to forego the pledges here while we're doing the Zoom meetings unfortunately, so that brings us up to the regular agenda. And I think, Brenton, are you on? I didn't see him.
Yep, I'm on.
Okay, I know you had a change you were gonna do.
We have to move agenda item twenty to be between thirteen and fourteen, so special assessment policy to be after number thirteen. That's the only change I'm aware of.
Okay, gotcha. All right, anybody else have any changes? Okay, with that, then I'm gonna accept the motion with that change to accept the regular agenda.
So moved by Dave.
Okay. Dave and Chelsea, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on that, otherwise I think that was pretty much cut and dried, all that stuff is routine, you know about.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll second.
Chelsea and Brian, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, approval of the minutes from the sixteenth. So I read through those earlier, I didn't see anything in there, but.
I didn't see anything either, motion approved the agenda for the number sixteen meeting.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Dave will second.
Dave does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Our special meeting on the eighteenth. Um, that was pretty much.
I didn't see any items there, I moved to accept the special meeting council minutes.
Dave makes a motion, can I get a second?
Okay.
Second. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, so we'll go to the sheriff's update, Thomas, it looks like you got it tonight, huh?
Yep, I was on shift, so I figured I better be the one to come. So this last month, we experienced one hundred and thirty total calls per service. Out of those calls, fourteen related deputies attempting warrants and civil papers. And with the relaxed apartments from the North Dakota citizens to file unemployment claim due to COVID nineteen, there's an uptick in fraudulent unemployment benefits claims, so if anybody here listening to us is receiving any paperwork that they did not request for any kind of unemployment claim, please make sure you contact us so we can take a report on that. As far as the call breakdown, we had one crash, three alcohol driving calls, no juvenile complaints, eleven animal calls, two alcohol related, six medicals, five citations were issued, thirty-six warnings were issued, no parking tickets were issued, uh, four parking warnings were issued, and there were two drug related calls, of those, uh, drug related calls, most significant was one where a person that was impaired ended up in somebody else's house, that person decided not to press charges, and the person that was impaired was brought to the hospital for an evaluation. Also, to note, I was talking with Brenton earlier, I don't know if it's become general knowledge for everybody yet, but Ross has asked to be extended in force for an additional year. Due to that extension, we're still trying to stagger, so we only have one deputy coming out each year. So due to that, they're going to be having me step out from force and replacing you with a deputy president.
Yeah, yeah, Jesse John had called me about that too, so we're kind of aware, unfortunate, but we understand how it works here, so. Um, did you, anything with the alcohol related, uh, any issues with that, or I mean, I hate to say it, but you know, it's just standard stuff?
As far as I know, there was nothing of significance with it, Ross prepared the report and he didn't have anything that he thought was significant, other than reminding me about the drug impaired person that we dealt with down there.
Yeah, all right, that was my next question too, was about that, so, okay. Um. The animal calls, is it just that we haven't, uh, critters running around the place, or are we, and are we, other issues like deer or turkey or something, or is it just pretty much cats and dogs, uh, complaints type of stuff?
That I don't recall, like I said, Ross prepared the, the call, the report from this month, so unfortunately, there wasn't enough for notes to go with it, so I don't think there was anything more than probably some animal complaints that we took in town.
Okay, that's fine. All right, anybody else got any other questions? Okay, all right, Thomas, thank you very much, probably, you have yourself a good Christmas, and we'll probably catch you next year then, huh?
You will, sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to number eight, Lucas, you've got this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, number eight is the annexation by resolution, uh, which has been on the city council agenda since November second, and if you'll recall, at that November second, uh, meeting, the city had a public hearing regarding the annexation uh, of the properties in question. Uh, at that hearing, there were sufficient protests, uh, to protest the annexation. Uh, as a result of that, the city council had a decision before it to either stop, uh, its pursuit of annexation or to pursue mediation, uh, as provided under the century code. Uh, residents that attended, uh, that meeting, uh, that, that were opposed to the annexation requested that, uh, the city council table its decision, uh, so the city could, uh, do further analysis of the costs associated with uh, Wall Avenue, and then have, uh, city staff and the mayor actually meet with those residents, uh, to discuss, uh, some of those costs that were associated with uh, that project, so the city council at that meeting decided to, uh, grant that, uh, that wish and tabled its decision for two weeks, uh, until November sixteenth, uh, at the November sixteenth meeting. Um, again, the city, uh, I believe at the request of, of you, Mr. Mayor, to table that decision, so additional, uh, meetings could take place with, uh, you and the residents uh, to discuss, uh, whether or not there was an agreement uh, for annexation, um, and so the city council again at the November sixteenth, uh, meeting decided to table its decision uh, until tonight's meeting, uh, and then on, uh, December third, uh, so last week, um, I had a phone call with, uh, John Bolger, who is the attorney for, uh, residents, uh, in the proposed, uh, annexation area. Uh, and him and I kind of discussed what was going on with this, uh, and had a conversation about, uh, whether or not the city would be interested in uh, entering into, uh, any sort of an agreement with the residents, uh, for annexation. Uh, I informed him that, uh, the city, um, or me as city attorney, never said that the city could not, uh, enter however, uh, I did state that I would not, uh, recommend that the city enter into, uh, an agreement like that, uh, where the, the city would enter, enter an agreement with residents uh, of the annexation area to, uh, basically pay for the costs of, uh, Wall Avenue, uh, either over a duration of time, uh, or upfront, uh, I just felt like that would be, um, an administrative and, and legal concern for the city in entering into those agreements, especially if uh, the residents were not required to pay for the project upfront. The concern being that if the city entered into, uh, those type of agreements that if residents did not pay the city, uh, for a portion of the cost of the project, that the city would, uh, potentially have to fight it for, uh, over breach of contract, um, which would be, uh, a battle for the city and, and losing money almost right off the bat, and you don't know how many people are actually going to follow through with that agreement. The other concern with those agreements is they wouldn't follow the property, and so if the city entered into an agreement with someone and they sold their home, uh, that, that agreement would not transfer to the new homeowner, and so if that payment wasn't made upfront, uh, then that, that agreement would basically be null and void as soon as they sold the property, so that's a, a concern there as well. So yes, we did have that conversation, uh, my recommendation is that, that the city would, would not, uh, enter into, uh, that type of an agreement. I also informed, uh, Mr. Bolger that the Wall Avenue project is not the sole reason for this annexation, and so that, that agreement, uh, potentially addresses one issue, but it does not address all of the issues, uh, that are involved with this, uh, and so, um, that's kind of where we left it in that, uh, you know, that, that agreement is, it's at the disposal of, of the city, uh, and if the city wanted to, it definitely could. My recommendation is that the city, uh, would not enter, uh, into those type of agreements. Uh, and so what you have before you tonight, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that there still, uh, has not, uh, an agreement still has not been reached uh, over annexation of, of this area. As a result of that, the city council still has a decision before it tonight, uh, whether it would like to, uh, pursue annexation, uh, which would require it to go through mediation. Uh, and that mediation, it's a committee that consists of the city, uh, the township, um, residents of the, residents that are a policy annexation are also on the annexation committee, uh, possibly a member from the county, and then a member, um, gets appointed, or a mediator rather, gets appointed by the governor's office to handle mediation proceedings. And at those proceedings, all those parties, uh, can discuss, you know, any concerns or, or desires that they have, uh, in regard to, uh, the annexation. Um, and so I, it's, it's either that or, uh, the city council halts, uh, its pursuit of annexation of this area. So that's the decision before the city council, uh, tonight. Um, any questions on that from the council? Uh, I can certainly address those, uh, Mr. Mayor, I know that, that you had, uh, some meetings, uh, with those residents, so uh, if you want to touch on any of that, uh, by all means, but that's kind of where we are now, it's still just a decision for the council. Does the council want to, uh, halt its, its, uh, pursuit of annexation or, uh, take this to mediation?
Okay, yeah, I'll just say, I mean, we had a couple of meetings with the, a couple of the residents from the Orchard, and then a couple of them from the, uh, from the Westbrook uh, side as well, uh, we had one meeting pretty much right after our first, uh, when we tabled it. Um, you know, we got some, got some issues out in the air and talked about them, uh, and then we decided to have another one here, um, after we tabled the second time, just to kind of uh, go over things again, uh, kind of explain what the city's position was, and they explained what theirs was. Um, wasn't, you know, again, we didn't have any resolution, just more, you know, conversation, so we kind of knew where each side was at. Um, so Lucas, why don't you just explain a little bit more about, you know, okay, so what is this mediation? Uh, what's it about, and then what would happen if the mediation, uh, was fruitless?
Yeah, so again, at the mediation, it's, it's gonna bring all the parties to the table, the governor will appoint, uh, a mediator, uh, to handle that, I doubt everyone would be in the same room. Um, but everyone would be kind of separated in their own, uh, little areas, and it, it could be one, uh, meeting, it could be several meetings, uh, where that mediator will just attempt to get the parties to come together to a resolution, whether that be, uh, through annexation or, uh, if the, if the city desires to, uh, go forth with, with an agreement. Um, that, that's certainly something that will be, uh, on the table and presented at that mediation. If the parties, if it seems like they are not, uh, gonna come to an agreement, the mediator then, uh, has the decision to, uh, just say, you know what, this isn't working. Uh, the parties are not gonna come to an agreement, uh, and then make that decision to, uh, stop the mediation proceedings, uh, and just say, you know what, you guys aren't coming to an agreement. If that's the case, uh, if the city does not like that decision, uh, then it can petition, uh, an administrative law judge to, uh, hear the matter.
Okay.
And so, as far as how long it'll take, I don't know, I don't know, uh, how long it's gonna take the governor, uh, to appoint a mediator, and then once that happens, uh, I do not know, you know, is this going to be just one meeting, or will it be, uh, more than one meeting? And so that's kind of where we're at right now with this, uh, after that, uh, let's say that, that mediation proceedings don't, um, don't get anywhere, and the city files a petition, uh, to have the matter heard before the administrative law judge, uh, that hearing will actually be, uh, within thirty days of the city filing that petition, so that, at least there's somewhat of a timeline, uh, to, but as far as, uh, this mediator, uh, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take.
Okay. Chelsea, I know you said it on those meetings, uh, we did too, I think it was around four hours worth of meetings, is there anything that you want to add that, uh, we haven't talked about before, or your, your perspective on those conversations?
Well, I know a lot of people, you know, there might be a few people listening tonight that, that, um, you know, obviously weren't at the meetings or, you know, what was related to them, but having from a city standpoint, it just boils down to us having to do what is, is fair for everybody, you know? When you're looking at city residents, that's who, that's who we represent, and these developments are surrounded by the city. And if we set, you know, a precedence or that we're gonna allow these pockets of communities to be not, um, annexed in, how, how does that, um, what does that mean for all the residents around them that are paying more in taxes for parks, for city, uh, staff to do every, all the work that they do? Um, I think our angle and how we have, how we have to look at it is, is just that, and, um, you know, the conversation with, with the groups is, you know, they don't want to come in, they, they don't want to be subject to the unknowns of taxes and, um, and assessments that the rest of us are subject to, which, you know, I, I definitely cannot blame them for that. Um, but is that enough? Is that fair to everybody else?
Right, okay. And I think, I mean, all that's, some of that stuff that, uh, if we proceeded with mediation, that was probably where a lot of these things would be handled, and if I'm correct with that, Lucas, because they did protest out, uh, according to the way that the statutes operate, when you've got to remember what the percentage was, but I know they went way over that, I think almost everybody protested out, so the next step would be then to a mediator, um, if that's what the steps were that we were, uh, told, correct? From me, just, just from, I'm what I'm trying to get at here, is that the steps that were, that are laid out in the, I don't know if it's the century code or wherever that was laid out, but how this, how this works?
Yep, it's, it's all laid out on, in the century code.
Yeah. So. So I guess you got, anybody else got any other questions on this, or comments they want to make?
Mr. Mayor, I know you are, I'm assuming other people are monitoring the chat, just to be clear that there has been a couple of comments, and we'll just read them quickly, just so that they're heard, that, uh, um, just reference to John Bolger, he was the only attorney for the Orchard, so just clarification there. Um, they are, again, reiterate, it's not a legal concern, they will pay upfront for that agreement, and they made it clear that they stayed, they'll pay up for that upfront. Um, one Lucas question to you is, could you please reiterate what the other issues are involved regarding annexation other than wall, if, if we can clarify those, um, and then you did explain the process for mediation if it fails?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure how much you want to get into this tonight, as far as, uh, where there's benefit or not, because that's, that's what I mean when I say there's, there's other matters involved here, and that's what other benefits are the residents receiving from the city, that's not just the improvement of Wall Avenue. And so I can list those off right now, which are in that staff report, however, uh, residents in the annexation area aren't gonna agree to that, so to, to go through that right now, I, I believe is a moot point, and I think that's better served, uh, to spend our time, uh, discussing that in mediation, not right now.
Okay, um, anybody else got any other questions on this then? Okay. Um, so I'm looking for a motion when we're, the other guys have to let me know how, what you're thinking on this. Can either go with the, the route of go to the meeting, you know, move it to mediation, or we drop the annexation. I guess I'm gonna recommend that we go to mediation with this. Thoughts, anyone?
Uh, I, 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 I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Who seconded it, I didn't catch, John, okay. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so it was unanimous, all right. Okay, Lucas, so I'll let you go ahead and proceed on with that then, and just keep us posted, okay?
I'm good, and I'll work with, uh, with everyone to get, uh, that mediation committee set up, and then, uh, we'll get in contact with the governor's office and see, uh, who they want to appoint, uh, as a mediator, and then see if that mediator wants to cap that committee to a certain amount, uh, of individuals. Uh, and so we'll just kind of work with the governor's office to set that up, this is something that, uh, it's, it's not done that often, uh, and so, like I said, we'll just work with them, and then if we need to bring something back to the council, uh, make a decision on, on representatives for that committee, uh, we will certainly do that.
Okay, all right, thank you then, um, move on to number nine. Um, Brenton, you got that one, sorry.
Didn't see that right away.
Okay, I have, about a month ago, I was approached by DRN, uh, which is a company that provides fiber services in rural communities, uh, they are looking at expanding their network, uh, we have Kent Shinkie on the, on the call here tonight, and then a couple others of the engineers that work with him, uh, from DRN, and what they'd like to do is just touch base with the council, give you an idea of what they're looking at doing. Uh, they could come in to the city without any sort of franchise agreement, because they fall under telecommunications. Uh, however, they're trying to work with the city, any city they work with, they want to establish a good partnership or effort of working together. Uh, franchise agreement would establish, um, just different things, acknowledging what parties are responsible for different steps along the way. Uh, this one, it would not be subject to a franchise agree, or franchise fee, and the reason why is because, uh, being telecommunications, those are not subject to those fees. Um, that is regulated by the FCC, so they're not responsible for that part. Um, however, they do want to make a significant investment into our community within the next year, I would ask, you know, Kent, he's on the call here, he could, uh, touch base with you, I've asked him to give a ten, ten minute, roughly a ten fifteen minute overview of what they're looking at doing, and answer any questions that you may have about what their business is, their company is, what they're trying to do, and anything else, they have been working with the cities of Castleton and Mapleton, or the past, or this calendar year, and it sounds like that's been pretty positive, so, uh, with that, I would ask, Kent could touch base with you. Uh, Kent, I saw him on the call here just a little bit.
I'm here.
Okay.
Thanks, Brett, um, yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity, um, yeah, I, like Brenton was saying, we, um, we're expanding our footprint. Um, Dicky Roll Networks has been in, in a cooperative, it's the eldest cooperative, telecommunications cooperative in the state. We've been in business for seventy years, um, we're kind of landlocked down here in Ellendale, we serve thirty-two rural communities, um, over a five thousand square mile area footprint, uh, we've got about seventy-eight hundred broadband subscribers currently, and, um, we're looking to invest back into North Dakota, and being landlocked, we're looking at communities, um, growing communities that are, don't have fiber optics. Um, and, uh, so Horace was, was on the list, uh, like you said earlier, this, uh, spring, we start, or actually it was in the summer when we got started, but in July, we started, uh, to build Castleton, we're about complete with that construction there, and we're gonna start turning up customers, um, towards the end of December here. And then Mapleton, we've got a good start on Mapleton as well, and, um, the plan would be to start, um, building in Horace in, um, the spring of twenty twenty-one, and hopefully starting turning up customers with services, fiber fed services, um, probably early fall of twenty twenty-one. Um, we, like I said, we're a hundred percent fiber, we, we were the first in the state to become a hundred percent fiber, um, we started our building two thousand four, and we completed in two thousand twelve, and quite frankly, I think we were the first in the, in the nation, one of the first in the nation to have a hundred percent fiber connectivity. Um, some of the service offerings, we would, we, we're gonna provide voice, um, voice service and also, um, broadband service. Um, the service offerings are two fifty by two fifty, five hundred by five hundred, and gig by gig. Um, and then, I would say by the time, we're sitting on right now a ten gig service, it's just there's no technology out there, or a home device that can actually deal with a ten gig service, so we have that available now, but I would say by the time we would be done with Horace, or start turning up customers on Horace, that, that service would be offered as well. Um, so, and like Brenton said, um, we like to do it, we're kind of new to this expanding game, but, um, we like to work with the cities, that's kind of as a cooperative, um, we get pretty involved with, with the cities that we, we deal with. Um, we look at it more as a partnership rather than, you know, we're, we're pretty involved with the city, um, community, community focused and minded. Um, that's why we want to get a franchise agreement, make sure ordinances are right, work with the city when we're building, building this network out in pretty much every aspect of the build. Um, I do have Terry Cashin, I'm not sure if Dustin Meyer from KLJ, those are my engineers, I've worked with them for, for many years on successful projects, and, um, if you have any questions as far as build or, um, design, they can answer those, um, but I would entertain any questions, but I, I'm basically here tonight to ask for kind of a blessing to move forward, I'd like to make a, make an announcement, and it's, it is a thirteen, we, we estimate about a thirteen million dollar investment into the city of Horace, so.
I think that's, uh, that's cool, so when I first heard about that, I thought that was very interesting, and I'm, I'm glad you guys looked at Horace to be able to do that. Um, so what are you guys' thoughts or plans, or have you got that far yet, as far as your build out, uh, you gonna just kind of start on one end of town and go through, or are you gonna be a little strategic with what you're gonna be upgrading? Or changing, I should say?
No, so actually, we're, we'd like to centrally locate our central office, where all the equipment is housed, where the fiber, each, each customer will have a single strand of fiber, or probably a four fiber drop from our central office location to each home. Um, so, so with that said, we kind of like to centrally locate that along highway eighteen somewhere there, we'd like to buy, purchase some prop, property would be the first step. And then we build out from there, so it won't necessarily be, um, it won't necessarily be, no, we're going one direction and one direction only, we're, we're gonna, we'll spread out and try to get as much um, as we can get done as once, there will be several crews probably in there boring the cable, we, we do it all by underground boring as well. There, there will be little to no, um, plows or scars or anything like that, so.
Okay. No, it's cool.
So essentially, what you would be doing is burying the ca, the fiber line into the neighborhoods, right, so you would be, you know, starting like you said, from a centralized area, and then building out and burying into the neighborhoods so that, at that point, you know, it would essentially, would there be a new box, uh, that residents would have that would, would then give you the ability to then connect from there into the house, or how does that work?
Yep, yep, so there, so, yeah, like you said, we, the main line cable would go through the, in the utility easement or areas, that's where we put that, and there's either a vault, um, a lot of times it's a, um, level with grade vault, so you can't see that, but in, in some cases, because of costs and stuff, if we can put a, a pedestal there, a BD seven pedestal, we will do that. Um, and then, yeah, there, there'll be a drop or a pipe, everything's buried in pipe, so there'd be an interduct placed to the side of the home. And, uh, the way we're doing it, like I said, this is kind of a new experience for us, in our traditional areas, we plowed fiber to every home, whether they wanted it or not. Um, in this, in the, in these instances, if what we're doing in Castleton and Mapleton, if somebody doesn't take services, but they want a drop, they want it there for future, in case they do want to take services, we will plow a spare duct, a, a pipe to the side of their house, and then they call us, we pull a fiber through that and splice them up in ten, yeah, but there will be a box on the outside of a house, a small splice point. And then, um, we run the fiber jumper into the home, into a router, um, which the router comes with the service we provide, so we probably. So we probably, and there's a new Gigablast router out there by Calix. It's very robust, and, uh, for many homes, it can provide a home with whole home wifi with just that one router without access points. So that's, that's kind of the general scope of what, what we're doing.
So what, the timeline, if, if you, you know, if, if we approve this, and you start, essentially start construction, you know, next spring, are you expecting that you would have service available for all the residents that, that want it by, in the fall timeframe, or?
I, well, and Terry's probably, Terry Cashin and Dustin are probably wanting to kick me, but yeah, I want it, I want it done. You know, we want to get this done as soon as possible. We, the reason I'm coming to you so soon is because, um, last year when we did, we decided in strategic, our strategic planning with Castleton and Mapleton, that was later in February. So by the time we got permits and we got design done and stuff, we weren't able to start until July. And, um, I'd like to get started sooner so we can get a building site, we can start getting wall, you know, the building put up, um, get the permitting, get, get ordinances taken care of, get everything taken care of with the city, and, uh, have enough time to notify the, the patrons of the city of Horace as well, what's going on and, and what we're going to be doing as well. So trying to be a little more proactive this, this time, we're learning some things, you know, um, from the other builds that we've done here recently, so, um, that, that's kind of the plan, trying to be a little more proactive in the process.
Sounds good, anybody else got any other questions?
Yeah, I, my question is about how much do you see the value of this, or dollars and cents, I guess, that you're potentially investing in Horace as the size of the project?
As far as?
Uh, the, you know, your build out basically, how mu- how much is that, that of an investment you guys as, as DRN are making, um, Dicky Roll are making in Horace?
Thirteen million dollars.
Okay.
Yep, thirteen, we're going to invest thirteen million dollars.
Okay.
At least that, and then the thing is, we've got, we've got the only, the only hundred gig network in the state as well. Most other networks are ten gig, and we've got a hundred gig network backbone. And so once we got Hor- once we have Horace built, the plan is to bring, because we'll have fiber coming in from Castleton area, one side, we're going to come around the south side from another exchange of ours, and then we're going to put a hundred gig ring, so it will be protected as well. So there will be some redundancy there as well. Um, so there will be continued investment into the project as the years go on, but for year one, it's thirteen million dollars.
Okay, how many, um, residents have you been able to in Castleton or Mapleton kind of pick up out of the gate, I guess, as you guys have done it?
Okay, so in, in Castleton, and this is the thing, if we would be, have things lit up, because we don't, we're still working on our, we're still working on the building, our, our central office. Um, but we had, um, out of, I believe, uh, there's seven hundred and fifty-five water meters, that's kind of what we went in, in the city of Castleton. And we have been requested to plow to four hundred and fifty of those seven hundred and fifty right out of the gate. So we've got, we've got four, you know, more, more than, well, more than half of, um, the customers in Castleton already have our pipe in their, at, at their house, so.
And, and just, I guess, as a competitive comparison, right? So if I'm, you know, on a midco, I'm paying ninety-nine bucks for their gig service, but I'm not getting the gig up, what kind of range of, of dollars for like the gig up and down are you guys?
Gig by, gig by gig with the router is ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we're, that's what we're offering. And then, um, and then there are some ancillary services on top of that, you know, you can go whole home manage wifi for six ninety-five, and then you don't even have to worry about your wifi at your house. So we've got some things going along with that. We also have, um, um, managed IT services, and we have offices in Fargo, Grand Forks, Bismarck, and Aberdeen, South Dakota, too. We take care of a lot of the schools throughout the state of North Dakota, um, doing their IT work, so.
Well, I work at Bobcat, so I'm pretty sure you have a couple of big cables going into the Gwinner plant, so.
Yep, we do, yep. And I, I, I work with, uh, Dave Lancy a lot on, we're doing something with some SIP trunks for you guys.
Sure, sure, yep.
So.
Thank you for the information.
You, you're welcome.
What would be the expected completion? The date?
To, yeah, and that's, there's a lot of variables on that. I'm hoping, I'm, you know, we, we'd hope to be complete by middle of November, end of November. You know, there's no guarantees after Thanksgiving in the construction world. Um, and this year it was looking a little, it was a little scary the first part of October when we got all that snow and that colder weather. But, uh, um, it's, we've been fortunate after that, and we've been able to get some more construction done, so. Um, it's aggressive, but, um, hoping by, by November timeframe, we'd be, be done with that. And then, and then as people, it can be ongoing too, as people move in or, or, you know, ask for services, we may have to bore a drop in here or there or whatever, so. But the main construction, I would say, November timeframe.
And maybe we could, I don't know, get the, get your guys' website out, out there for people to take a look at?
Yes, yes, I can, can I give that to Brenton and he could blast it, or?
Yep, that'd be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what, he, he, Kent could get me their email address, or their, uh, website address, and we could put it on the city's face, or we- website. Um, also, what I do want to address is the franchise agreement. Uh, Lucas and I have been working on that and working with Kent. So we have a draft that I don't think we're too far apart from being able to get ready to go. Um, and the reason, you know, there was one question about franchise fee. Uh, basically a franchise fee is like a rent to be in the right of way. The only groups that are exempt from being able to be charged a franchise fee are those regulated by the FCC, if I remember correctly, Kent, and, and Lucas there, um, however, if a utility pays a franchise fee, in our franchise agreements, they are exempt from having to pay permit fees. They still have to get a permit, but they don't have to pay a permit fee. In DRN's case, they would have to pay permit fees for every area they're working within the right of way. So, you know, they, they could have potentially quite a few permits out with the city for being, working within our right of way. So that is, that's one, that's the difference between their dynamics with a franchise agreement and pretty much any other utility we work with. And like I said, it's, it's treated as also, also like a rent to be within our right of way, because that right of way does get congested in some, some roads, like Wall Avenue, for example. Uh, that has quite a bit of utility, all located along it, current seventeen, there's quite a few utilities located along there. And that, that does get congested pretty quickly, so that's the intent of the franchise fee, though.
I guess Brent, just to clarify that, then, it's not just that we want to charge a fee for franchise fees, it, it covers all the time and effort that our employees have to put in to help maintain those permits and make sure that they're not overlapping things. So there is overhead that the city has to incur to do that work and support those, uh, organizations as they're doing that work, right?
Yep, yep.
Alright.
And there's typically a lot of coordination within, with those utilities. Uh, once they become present, there's typically quite a bit of coordination. When we have different developments going on, road projects, even a water leak, there's coordination with each of those utilities that are present. Uh, I have feeling, you know, DNR come, DRN comes into Horace, uh, we'll be working with them quite a bit, because if we have any situation where anybody's digging, there's communication between their staff and public work staff.
Sure.
They're working together on those different issues, so, yes. But what you'll see is, will likely, our goal is to have that franchise agreement to you either the next being or in January. Uh, just depends on when we get that draft worked, it worked up between both parties that we're good with. But, uh, Lucas did model the draft agreement that we sent back to DRN to Kent there, uh, off of Castleton and Maple, Mapletons. So we don't expect it to be too drastic or anything, too drastic would change, so.
So one, Ken, one question, Ken, uh, it, would there be, actually be any jobs that would come to Horace, uh, as a result of this?
Yes, we're, we plan on, that's why I kind of want to get ahead of this. I, I need to look for some property to get purchased in a, in a location, and we'd like to, our central office doesn't require a lot of room, but we want to put a storefront on that, that houses three, three to five, um, employees that'll, that'll, we need a customer service representative. We're probably going to put an area manager there, um, and then a technician or two. And then, you know, maybe our Fargo office moves, our Fargo off, we're in Rocket, at Rocket Horse Farms right now. And maybe our, our, uh, IT staff at Rocket Horse there moves into the Horace area as well. So, yeah, definitely plan for some employees in a, in a storefront and some offices there right here.
Okay. So Brenton, what would you like us to do here then, uh, what's, uh, your action item?
Well, this, actually, we, we're meant to say discussion and update, but this just, uh, to give you a heads up right now.
Okay.
And then what you'll have for action at the next co- next council meeting or early January, most likely, would be, we'll start going through that ordinance process to get, uh, this franchise agreement established via ordinance, so. Um, this is mainly to give you a heads up about what is going on and to keep the ball moving with DRN.
Okay, good. I appreciate the, uh, update there, Kent, and, uh, welcome to Horace. Glad you guys picked us to come in and do that, because I think that fiber will be nice to have in town, definitely.
Appreciate it, tha- thanks again for the opportunity and look forward to talking with everybody again soon.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll move on to number ten then, Brenton, you got that one, looks like?
Okay, the next one here, I'm just going to introduce is Richard First, Firstman, he is on the call, or on the Zoom call. Uh, Richard is owner and consultant with Hugh Life. Uh, we've been working with Hugh Life over the past roughly, what, six to eight months on the strategic plan. Uh, we've had a handful of different, some survey activity that has gone out, gaining resident input. Uh, we actually had quite a bit of input through those surveys. Uh, we also had strategic planning workshops, and now Richard has completed the strategic plan document itself, and he has a presentation to go over what the findings were from that strategic plan process. Uh, really, this is laying the blueprint for us of where are the next steps? Where are we going to tackle within different timeframes, what are our goals? And like I said, Richard will get into the details on that for you. But, uh, with that, if Richard wants to pick up here and go through his presentation, uh, Brian, I believe he has his presentation, I don't know if, if Richard could share a screen, otherwise if you can, either one with that PowerPoint, and he could tell you when to move to the next slide.
Uh, thank you Brenton, and, and mayor, council, and everyone watching. Uh, great, great to see, uh, your faces again. And if, um, if you want to give me, uh, permission to screen share, I, I'll try that.
Seeing if I can. Uh, it's not showing me how to do that to make you a?
A host?
Do I need to make you a host?
Uh, no, you just.
Let's see here. I don't see the option to.
Okay.
Well, we're, I can, I can make you, let's see, uh, okay, so I'll make you a co-host, and let's see if that gives me the option. So now do you see an option on the top to share your screen? So I will stop sharing, let's see if you can see an option on the control panel to, to share your screen. Should be in the bottom of your pane.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're coming through now.
Yep. There it is. I see it.
Okay. Here, so, here we go, and what I'm, the purpose of this is to provide a brief overview of that journey, recap the directions that, that we took and introduce the work plan for adoption. And a- as a brief overview, we started, as, uh, Brenton said, we started collecting data. We started, uh, doing some community surveys, we created a shared vision and strategies, and then developed a blueprint for, uh, acting on those. Another way of saying that is, when collecting data, we asked, why do we need a new strategy right now? That was really what we dove into. Um, once we've established the why and what it is we're trying to do, what is our vision and direction? And then finally, how do we get there? When we're, a- as a part of getting there, we set up goals, um, uh, to motivate that achievement, alignment and integration to create action plans, which is the last step, and then accountability, which circles back. How are we doing, what progress are we making? And, uh, that was all part of a, uh, step-by-step work plan that was put together as well. Uh, and many of you participated in that. The process included a core planning team that helped focus, uh, that core planning team, uh, Brenton hinted at that too, uh, be- before we ever came together with the community stakeholders, uh, identified, uh, potential areas where we'd want to get information from, kind of put a, put a parameters around, what did we want to look at for the strategic planning? Can't look at everything, so what, what do we want to really focus on? Then the community, uh, stakeholders came together, we did participate in that visioning, the issues analysis and strategic thing, uh, thinking, and then developed the action plan. A part of the current review of the plan, what are we doing currently? Well, we had, you had a, just done, uh, your comprehensive plan, so we didn't want to just brush over that. We looked at that pretty carefully. You were also involved in marketing and branding, and we introduced, in addition to that, a community survey, uh, and incorporated the feedback into our session, along with the, there was a facilities needs assessment, and, and how are we going to address those needs? What do we need more of the community? Uh, we, we asked, uh, in the community participation, shops, restaurants came out big, and places to walk and bike. Those, those were, uh, the loudest of the, um, things that we had to do. Actually, it was interesting looking at the agenda tonight, echoes of what's going on, uh, in the strategic plan, um, reverberate throughout your strategic plan as well for, for the projects that you're doing. Issues that a ma- uh, that matter most, uh, keeping the residents and businesses that are in Horace today, improving the availability of affordable housing, ensuring that the roads and infrastructure will meet the demands of the growing community, preserving the sense of community that Horace already has, and protecting the existing neighborhoods, were all the issues, uh, most important that rose to the top. When we asked, well, what about infrastructure? Um, what are the top three areas? Not of the top three, four came up. Uh, when you have people, a, a number of people, uh, an option to pick, bicycle friendliness, parks, water, wastewater, stormwater, and roads were, if, if we're looking at, uh, infrastructure, this is, uh, where we want to concentrate. Now, the comp plan goes and suggestions, the areas it covered that, uh, were reported back include small town character, which, uh, was probably, uh, the theme also held uh, throughout the strategic planning process. How do we, how do we develop commercially and with mixed uses, redevelopment and infill, transportation, small area plans, housing choice, economic vitality, municipal infrastructure, facilities and services, park and recreation, natural resources, were all on the table when we did the strategic planning session with the council. We started off with the vision, and this came from the strategic, uh, from, from the comprehensive plan. With the vision and this came from the strategic from the comprehensive plan. The city of Horace is a community with high quality of life and expanding economic opportunities which embraces. Its historical heritage and protects the environment while carefully planning for future development and utilizing the proximity of the metro area. As an asset and a positive economic driver. So if that's where we're going, the next question is what, what needs to happen? Excuse me, what needs to happen in the next three to five years for Horace to build upon its high quality of life? Heritage and natural beauty. And that was the question we tackled at the time of the retreat. Retreat was held over two days. One of the challenges. Working, working through COVID. Limiting the, the number of people that we could have in the building. And then people scheduled. So some people were able to join. Some people are then had to leave. Some people arrived later. Those challenges were worked through. And from, from the work that was established, we had strategic directions. If we're going to move towards that vision that I just talked about. One of the directions was to establish our presence and identity. We would do that through a city hall that facilitates changing needs and engagement in the community. And we'll have a defined city center that serves as the economic basis for economic development and public life. And the overall purpose of this is to create a sense of place. That will become the heart of the community. It will be a place defined as the city center. With a mix of economic, government and recreation uses. That was the reason why we did this. Really create that focal point, high quality focal point to drive economic development and community engagement. Part of the work plan that we're looking at here, you can see. The first year. Get the facility need study and identify, identify location of new city hall. We also saw the need for rezoning. Get that plan completed. Have city center plan on the table. Move to a groundbreaking for the city hall and then identify where and how the Renaissance plan will occur. Renaissance plan will occur. The next strategic direction, and by the way, there were four. Creating community pride. Done through positive public perception of the city and community pride. And plentiful opportunities for community involvement. The focus of this was to create a sense of pride in the community through awareness building, citizen participation. Volunteerism and beautification. To do this, some of the actions that were going to be taken the first year. Build that improved communication plan and that was internal and external. Build a collaboration. A strong collaboration between the city and school. Form committees that would be established to work on the goals. And upgrade the website and new services within the website. The third strategic direction. Is to is promoting an active community. Through this, we hope the community recreation is focusing on health. And togetherness. That we have a trail connections that unites neighborhoods into one community. We've actively engaged community or we have an actively engaged community that utilizes natural resources. Purpose of this is to ensure residents and visitors to the community have access to connection. And connection to various outdoor activities. Done through recreation trails and the natural environment. Some of the work items that were created for first year. The park board, making sure that we have representation on the COG committee. Quarterly collaboration between park board, planning, zoning and city council. Making sure we're on the same page, publishing community activity guide for both kids and adults. And implementation of the parks comprehensive plan. And then the metal lake park grand opening plan. And that's, that's probably not a 2021, but maybe. Twenty twenty-two later in the year anyway. Our final strategic direction was about planning smart. If we plan smart, we'll have balance and diverse growth that supports revitalization. And the small town neighborhood feel. Purpose behind planning smart. Is that we, we want to keep the small town feel of Horace. This will be done through. Housing to balance diverse needs while maintaining the neighborhood feel. The city will also be keeping on top of repairs or replacement of infrastructure. Focus will be on revitalizing areas of infill with mixed use of space. That promote apartments, small shops, restaurants and unique local boutiques. As part of planning smart. The biggest action for the first year was the zoning ordinance. Form that steering committee for the zoning ordinance, select a consultant to write it. And then review the draft of the new zoning ordinance. It was seen as. One of the steps that could be taken in the first year. Those. Actions then were put into a, I'm going to share a new screen here. Those actions for the first year were taken and put into actual work plans. This is just a particular example that I'm, that I'm showing you here. Each, each one of those steps. Was in process to identify who's going to. Lead the, lead the charge on that one. Who's going to be collaborating? What are the actions that are going to be taking, taken? And as you can see this. The activities flow all the way through twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And Brenton, has this been shared, this particular piece, the calendar yet with the, with the council?
For the cal, the calendar, I don't believe that we've kicked that out yet. And one thing I'd want to stress is we, you have on there the new city hall. That's example. And that one likely is going to be pushed back. You know, it's, it's not, it's already outdated there from when we did the street to get planning, obviously, but. It gives example of just some very, very high level steps that we'd have to go through. And these are just things to work towards to accomplish. One thing we have also for folks to see is the facility need study. The facility need study. Has still has to go back to the council for final approval of that because all they saw was a draft of that. So, but I just want to clarify because there, there are some questions or concerns about a city hall. And point that was that probably isn't the best example for right now show what we have. However, it's just example right here. And. How it's, how this process is looking at. You know, there are a lot more steps to just going off and saying, oh, we're going to tackle this project or that project. So, but that's sort of calendar. This is, this we wanted to present and bring forth today. That's why you're showing it now. So.
Yes, and, and Brenton, you bring up a really good point. This, this is something that we all have to focus on. Is that. You create, you, you create these plans. These plans are living documents. And when you sit down and you start writing them or especially calendaring them out, it's not that your destination changes. How you get to your destination is, is full of variables. And that's what Brenton is talking about. As, as you test things, as we test the appetite. For certain designs of city hall. You may, if, if, if everything went smoothly and everybody went, oh, this is perfect. You know, you'd be able to follow this kind of a timeline. If however, you get public comment and you go, you know, there's some other things that we might want to consider in this. Well, that's going to delay and that's fine. The idea though is to put the plan out and to put steps in place. So you go. Once, once we do have a plan that's palatable for city hall and it's one that the community endorses and embraces and we're all behind. We have our next steps and identified and we, we just moved the calendar and adjust accordingly. And that's the same for all of the processes that we have in the strategic plan. It is not a document that we. Look at and go, we have to meet every one of these by this date. Otherwise, it, it doesn't give you any flexibility. It's supposed to be flexible. It's supposed to be a living, breathing document that changes. Quarter to quarter. That's why it's essential that you come back into the schedule. For example, like you would have here and take a look and see where are we at this, what. What obstacles might be there and how do we adjust our calendar? So with that. I, I will either be happy to answer any questions or give it back to the mayor for. How you want to, what, what we're really looking at, adopt the. Adopt the strategic plan for. The city.
Okay. Did you guys have any questions, anybody? Dave, Chelsea, John? Yeah, I know we've talked about this, you know, we've kind of gone through this. We went through the whole process with you and things like that. So I mean, I think we're. We have what we have, you know, identified the things that we are looking at and we got them down here, which is great. But like Brenton said, I know some of the timelines have slid on them and, and they're going to, we knew that too, but. It was at least to get these things on paper so we could see, you know, how we're going to try and move things along here with different. Concepts and ideas that we came up with at the strategic planning. So.
I guess Mayor Corey, I would like to just, you know, we're monitoring the questions and somebody asked the question about, again, this is about city hall. But in relation to a motion that we put forth in the previous meeting, you know, where is that? And, and they stayed in RFP. Yes, it was an RFP to determine a architect and a construction management company may, we may work with to. Determine a design. I guess I just want to make sure we're clear that the needs analysis was just very, very preliminary. It doesn't have any of the architectural drawings, anything like that. We don't have a location yet, all of those things. And we had to bring forward. A request to determine a group of individuals we would work with to try and start doing this design. So. That motion is going to continue to move forward, but it is just an initial stage of trying to get a group that we can work with. So. It does not affiliate to any groundbreaking, anything like that in the, in a, in a city hall. So just want to make sure that we're clear on that with the, with the point there. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's also include the public input that we're going to be asking for and their involvement along the way with this whole process. Let's make sure everybody out there is not hearing this wrong and all of a sudden goes to the media and gets negative publicity for us again. For everyone to be clear, this is not happening tomorrow and everybody will get a chance to be involved with it. So there, there's a long process.
Yep, there is definitely a long process here. This is just kind of getting the ball started.
You know, I think that. Just to put in perspective, I mean, we have so much of our. Of our vacant land in this community being platted and being looked at for development and we only have so much land. The city is, is growing really, really fast and doing these strategic planning. Activities are really important so that we can have conversations, make sure that we're trying to get, you know. Small town field, you know, community engagement, parks, all those important things. That if we were just to sit around and let this kind of do its thing, we end up with no. No say, no control in what, what the final outcome is of all this growth that we're dealing with. And, you know, I would, I would challenge a lot of people to work in the conditions that our staff works in. They're on top of each other and they work extremely hard for our community and we are still short staffed. I mean, in the next couple of years when this is maybe, you know, maybe it gets going in a couple of years. You know, if that's how long it takes, we're going to be still another year out for building. Three years from now, we need more staff. And we need a place to put them. And when we're talking about city hall, you know, doing a bigger building with space to lease out. Potentially, you know, activities with the parks, you know, things to engage our community members. And making something that's really thought out. That people can enjoy for years down the road. That's all part of the process. It's not just. Slap it on the table and, you know, build it. This is, this is a process and I, I think. That I, you know, my point was is just, I want people to know that there's planning, there's communication. And bottom dollar is, is the top of the conversation. When you're talking about leasing space that somebody else builds. You're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars a year just to lease it. And how does that look long, long term for our taxpayers? So, you know, there's a lot of conversation that, that is going on and I just want people to. Not jump to the worst case scenario all the time.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chelsea. Anybody else got any comments on this that they want to talk about?
I, I just wanted to state that appreciate Richard and your, your team coming in and working with us. It was very helpful to, you know, direct us. Make sure we're focusing on the right things. This is, you know, your guys' expertise and, and none of us have that, you know, ability to do that. And it was a very. Great process, learned a lot. I think a number of our community members that were engaged as well learned a lot and just, you know, I thank you for all this work and. Really pleased with the output that we've created and all already the work that some of the staff is doing to. Move forward on some of the things like some of the communication plans and then websites, things like that. So, thank you, Richard.
No, no, I appreciate that too. All the things we got. Think all the stuff we all learned through this process and all was good. So. All right. So Brenton, what would you like us to take an action item on here? Are we looking more toward to accept the plan? Or to continue moving forward? What's, what's our goal here?
Basically, this would be acceptance or looking for a motion to approve that plan, knowing that is fluid though. But it's the, the direction we're going towards, you know, just like our comprehensive plan. This is the short term. The concept comprehensive plan looks all the way up to twenty forty-five. This is looking out for the next couple of years. So. And it's really identifying just kind of targets what we're, what we're targeting, working towards and different things like that. So. A motion from council approving the strategic plan is what we'd be looking for.
Right. So I'll just reiterate to, I mean, this, the, the ideas and the concepts that we have in here. We identified those are the strategic parts, the timelines that they'll get implemented are going to shift. They are not static. They are going to be quite dynamic at this point. So that's what we're working on right now is continuing with that. So. All right. Can I get a motion from someone to accept that?
So moved.
Make some motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, motion carries. All right, Barrett, you've got South Hill Farms.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, sorry to interrupt for a second. There is a reference in our comments section of the meeting that we are not addressing all the comments here in the meeting. We are trying to monitor them, but correct, we are trying to stay on agenda and when there is public. Hearing or public input, we would take those comments, but we don't take every comment at, at the meetings. During some of these areas. Is that correct? Or how would you guys like to state that if I've stated that incorrectly?
I think that was what, you know, when we're, when we're getting public hearings, that's when we get the input. On that, we'll take some Q and A if necessary, but I think for the most part, we're trying to stay if it's public hearing. That's when we'll entertain some of that. Okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mary Council members. I think what we're going to do at those.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mary Council members. Uh, I think what we're going to do with this item, uh, we're going to break it in half. I'm going to. Touch on the first two items of the plant rezone. I'll kind of talk about those together and then we'll have our city engineer Jim Dahlman. Uh, finish out the rest of the items by talking about the engineers report, services agreement and plans and specs. Uh, and then uh, council member Schmidt, if you don't mind, could you please pull up my PowerPoint presentation? I think it'd make it a little bit easier if I provided a visual of, of the application that I'm going over here today. Okay. All right, and if you can go to the next slide, please. All right. So what you have before you today is staff received an application uh for a plat and zone change for a subdivision titled Southdale Farms Third Edition. Uh, from Chris Mack on behalf of New Horizon Homes for a one hundred thirty-seven lot, seven block subdivision. Uh, to accommodate for future residential and commercial development of approximately forty-eight point oh nine acres. Uh, the applicant is proposing a zoning change from agricultural to uh MU mixed use, which would be our first application for the zoning designation. Uh, C two town center, commercial, uh PF public facilities and R six high density residential. And we'll kind of uh get to that here in a bit. Uh, what you have before you on this illustration of the location map. Uh, so this development proposal would uh propose to continue the development on the north side of Southdale Farms that you see. Uh, south of the subject properties. Um, and then if I could have you uh go to the next slide, please. So yeah, I'm just illustrating that currently it's uh zone agriculture and then I'll kind of get into the details if you can go to the next slide, please. So this is the proposal of the plat and I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Uh, what you see on the top of the plat is Christian Boulevard that would connect. Uh, seven, uh sixty-eighth avenue all the way over to sixty-seventh street. And we would also be adding a multi-use path that would start on kind of the bottom there between block one and two. Uh, and then it would kind of weave itself over to uh block thirty-one, block five, which would be a pond lot. And then. Uh, we would propose that that multi-use path go all the way up to Christian Boulevard. Uh, the reason for that is north of this property, we've already planted. Uh, two lots for an elementary school in a large regional park. So uh, this would help to create that continuity and connectivity uh to those amenities. Um, and then if I could have you uh go to the next slide here. So just to kind of break it down with a visual here, uh, in your far uh top left-hand corner, other proposing uh C two town. Commercial uh zoning district below that uh mixed use. Uh, I have received a phone call from the public on, or from a developer on the slot already, uh, they're very interested in the slot and uh. How the city would evaluate a building permit application if this were to pass. Uh, the rest would be. Zone R six, uh higher density residential. Now you see that pond lot over there, that would be a public facility. Then the plan would be to. Have a drainage pond of both sides of Christian Boulevard, both on the south and north side to accommodate for runoff. Um, and then uh, if you also noticed too, on uh, I think it was block two, the far left-hand corner. Uh, we have a lot that would be zone public facility. If you recall from Southdale Farms First Edition, we had a lot for a lift station. Uh, after soil tests were performed, they failed and it was determined that it was not possible to put a lift station in that location. So one will be placed on that lot in that area and then it would be a zone to PF public facilities accordingly. Um, and then if I could have you go to the next slide, I just wanted to demonstrate that with this proposal and the zoning proposal, it lines up with our. Uh, feature land use plan very well. Orange, you see there's compact development. Uh, the pink is mixed use. Uh, the brown is urban. Urban promotes a uh, uh, higher density residential development and our commercial and they are proposing commercial. Uh, in uh regarding the land dedication requirements, if you recall from Southdale Farms First and Second, the developer over dedicated. Uh, the uh, to meet the land dedication requirements as part of this application process. The net balance would still be an over dedication. So uh, there uh. Those requirements will be complied with, with land and cash flow that has already been dedicated. Uh, so staff is evaluating this application, finds out the proposals in line with the city of Horace's twenty forty comprehensive plan. And uh therefore staff recommends approval of the proposed final plat and uh zone changes outlined in the staff report. And uh, our applicant, uh, Mr. Mack is here with us too, if you have any questions.
Yeah. Chris, are you on there?
Uh, Brian would have to move him over to a participant. He's an attendee, so we can't unless Brian can unmute him specifically. So it's just named Chris, so.
In the meantime, you can open the public hearing if you'd like.
Yeah, I was gonna say we'll open up the public hearing on Southdale.
Chris, Chris, you're unmuted.
Uh, yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I want to hear you.
Okay. Um. I guess, um, Barrett, are you able to pull up those PDFs that uh I sent earlier?
Uh, I could try. Uh, feel just bear with me for.
Okay, I guess I can, I can talk, but uh, I guess we're excited to do um, uh, additional development um. Over at Southdale uh Farms uh Third Edition and uh. Has Barrett's pulling up these PDFs. I just want to kind of show uh or. Talk about what our, our plans are with the pond and I, I think it kind of goes hand in hand with the uh, what was discussed earlier tonight about. Um. Trying to promote bike path connectivity um and uh different uh amenities for the residents in this area. So one thing we're proposing is the uh, the bike path that would go through um lot. Uh, going through blocks uh two and three up through uh block five and it will connect over to. The um school lot and. The park district lot and then what Barrett mentioned, we're possibly have uh doing another pond to the north that Butt Lake Path would continue through there. So.
It's Chris, I have the, the, on here. Oh, go ahead.
Like I was just gonna say, if you guys, if any of the public has a question on this, uh, please use the Q and A window. Uh, we'll answer your questions there for a public hearing on this. So, okay, Dave, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, I was gonna state, so it is have a uh, uh, shared use path. Um, and maybe Barrett answers this, but. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that the cost of those shared use paths and everything is included in the total um, uh. District that's created and that is included in all of the special assessments that will be on this land. So generally the people who buy the lots are covering those costs. That's correct, Barrett?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
And I apologize, I'm not able to share my screen, but I forwarded the documents off to Commissioner Schmidt via email. Uh, if you're still interested in viewing those images. Uh, and I just wanted to kind of note too, uh, with these, with the addition of a hundred thirty-seven lots, if this were approved tonight, that would bring. A total of over seven hundred lots that we planted this year. So if you could imagine uh households that would be moving into each structure, that's going to affect our city's population. Pretty substantially. So um, and just from the applications, the inquiries and the meetings that we're having, we don't see this stopping anytime soon. Uh, so I, I think it's really great with our planning efforts that we're really starting to look at this and think how we're going to work with this. Uh, so that we can address the, this large demand for development. Uh, and case being tonight, you have a hundred and thirty-seven lots before you tonight. Um, and I, I think it fits with our account plan, future last, future land use plan perfectly.
Yeah, Brian, I think um, the next PDF would kind of shows.
So go to the next.
This one shows it well too, but. The one with the aerial. So that, that shows uh.
This one?
Uh, that one there, yep. Yep. So it shows the, from the discussion where we were talking on the Southdale Farms First Edition. Where we uh split the blocks uh. Uh, five and six, um. Coming up, connecting through um, uh, going across Christians and Boulevard um. And then over to the park and then it shows a uh kind of what our future layout, I mean, it will change slightly, but uh. To the north, that's kind of our future development. And, and the gray lines are showing the uh bike path, uh multi-use path connectivity. And one thing to note, um, I believe where you have your cursor there, there has been some discussion that. That uh sixty-eighth won't continue all the way through, but we'll make that adjustment and we'll have to do some different things at that point in time, but it won't affect this plat.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions on, on this?
Hey, Chris, this is John. Um, two questions here. One, what kind of amenities are you thinking? For the future of that park land and then also what about your C two property there, uh four point seven acres? Any ideas of what you're planning for that?
So um, I guess on the park, it's uh kind of up to the park board, but I know they've talked about uh. Some different things. Um, you know, way back uh last year, we were showing a, a, a long lineal park. Um, the park board wanted a, a larger parcel similar to this. Um. So they can put a, a larger facility and I think they also wanted maybe a baseball field or something on it. So. Um, we haven't got too far into the exact details of how that would all look, but.
Well, I'll just say it, you, you take that whole area, you know, further north, it's undeveloped. Um, I guess I look at it as a whole broad area of opportunity. To include maybe a regional park that everybody contributes to instead of just one smaller park. Uh, I know our park district, our park board doesn't really look to that type of opportunity. And I think it would be wise, I think you guys have experience to offer maybe that type of opportunity to them. So I, I just, I, I, I don't want to see something missed, you know, that could be really huge for the city of Horace in opportunity.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And then as far as the commercial um lot, um, we don't have anything set for that um yet. But we're just kind of following. The uh comprehensive plan um and. It kind of based on our development to the south, uh, it being a major corridor, we do uh feel that would be a good spot um for. Some smaller retail or um restaurant, coffee shop type thing.
Okay, no, that's all I was asking. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Not looking, Dave. Anybody coming in on Q and A?
Uh, just question, question, not on Q and A, but a couple of comments is a question of how many of the seven hundred lots um have been sold that we've been. Platted and I don't think we have that information because some of the developments are still in process and only. One or two have actually finished up enough to actually start potentially doing that. And that would be a question for the developers. And there is a question that if uh we want people outside of the new development to pay for a park that needs to be up to a vote of the residents and know that is a. The park district takes care of that and if they choose, they, they would, that, that they're separate from us. They would have to choose to either do that or, or bring it to a vote. So it isn't guaranteed it has to go to a vote. The park district. Can choose how they want to approach it. So that's outside the city.
Okay.
Maybe.
John?
Oh, I, maybe I should clarify. I'm sure that comment was directed from my comment about the park. When I, when I talk about a regional park, I'm talking about undeveloped land. Where a, we have a developer contribute funds instead of land. And that's where those, those funds are put together as far as, as far as like. Uh, producing a big regional park. So again, like Dave said, it has to be driven by the park board to create that. Uh, but no, it's not voted on by the citizens on that.
And the last question is, can the park district special assess residents? And the answer to that is yes, they can.
Yeah.
They're an entity just like the city, so.
Yep, they are a. They do have the taxing authority, so they do have the special assessment authority as well. Um, Barrett, do you have any idea just off the top of your head, you know, the seven hundred lots, how many are sold? Cause I know that out of a couple of those developments, I think. Most of the lots got sold to develop, to, you know, to um home builders. Uh, but I don't remember what that number was, but I just know a lot of them.
You know, we, we had those numbers back in April, but it's changing so fast. We haven't been able to keep up and uh the information's obsolete. Uh, we need to send out a new survey. We'll probably have another one uh next year, uh hopefully earlier, but we'd like to at least keep an annual. Uh, record of what those statistics are.
Yeah, yeah, it'd probably be good to get a refresh on that probably in January or February, just so we kind of start off the year with knowing where, where we're at. I mean, I know where we were in April and I know that's changed a little bit. Uh, if you don't want here, but uh probably good to get an update on that just for. Making sure we know what all the lot inventories are, because I know we kind of talked about that back in September and uh we had a handle on it then, but I know there's been a few changes since, so. Um, but anyway, okay, has anybody got any other questions here on the?
I think it'd be quite easy to figure out, you know, how many lots did we have opened up at the beginning of the year? And we've done what seventy-five to a hundred building permits? And, you know, we're going to have more lots available this next year. I, I, you know, obviously with great weather now, uh, try to predict what we're going to have for the spring, but it, it's going to be a huge building. Season next year.
Yeah, definitely. All right. So with that, then I'll probably close the uh public hearing on this. Um. Move on to that. Um. Among the council here, did you guys have any other things you wanted to talk about with this plat?
Hey, Corey, I have one thing to add, just off, uh, councilman Corstman's comment there. Um, looking back in October, we had. Almost a hundred twenty new homes. And that number has gone up. I want to say we're probably around a hundred thirty-five new homes. And when you look at total building permits, uh. That would be like basement remodels, new homes, commercial, every, you know, all these different things. We're like, we've passed the two hundred permit mark this year. Uh, last year, total permits for everything was around a hundred thirty. So uh, that is quite, quite an increase. And also I wanted to bring up that, you know, many of these developments, by the time they. Right after, not long after they plat, uh, is it not uncommon for builders to. Create purchase options on these? That's not how all developers. Handle their lots, but that's not uncommon. And also it's not uncommon to see uh builders buying these lots fairly quickly. I've heard of uh other subdivisions where they're, they've been platted out of those seven hundred lots. I don't have exact numbers, but I've heard. You know, from some of these developers where they have sold most of those lots already, or they've had the options on them. So. I just want to touch base just briefly on that, so you know, to answer some of your questions or the customer or course man brought up just a little bit ago.
Okay. All right, uh, with that then, is there any other discussions? Otherwise I'm going to accept the motion to accept the plat.
Motion to approve the plat.
Okay. Brian did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries and then we'll move on to the rezone. Um, who's got that one? Barrett, you got that one?
Uh, that information was provided during my presentation. I, I presented it along with the plat. So uh, if you have questions about that, please let me know.
I moved to accept the rezone as uh communicated and showing here, I think basically in the slide that Brian's showing.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second, Dave, I gotta do a public hearing on this.
Oh, you gotta do both, okay, sorry.
We'll open up a public hearing on the rezone, Barry, you said there was anything else you wanted to add on to that?
There wasn't, no.
Okay. Okay. And all right, I'll go once, twice, anybody got, Dave, was there anything out there on the?
Nope, there's nothing right now.
Okay, so with that, then I'm going to close the hearing on the rezone, I'll kind of talk this through with the plat, so. Okay, any other discussion or comments about the Barrett, anything else you want to add?
There's nothing else I want to add, thank you.
With that, I'm gonna accept the motion then to accept the rezone.
So.
Second.
Who was the, who moved?
Brian.
Brian did.
Sorry, couldn't catch up, okay, Brian and Chelsea. All right, I'll close the public hearing too, by the way, just to make sure that got done and then we'll. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, rezone carries. Um, see, do we want to just put the the C, D and E together?
Yes, that's that's fine if you want to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So. Anybody have any questions about that or? This is kind of a, this is pretty much boilerplate stuff, I don't know, Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
I certainly can, yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, so what you have before you is the preliminary engineering report, that report details the existing conditions, the proposed improvements. Detailed cost estimate and the. Kind of the methods and approvals, the permits we're going to need for constructing the project, as Barrett said, it's a hundred and thirty seven lots. This would be a special assessment project that would consist of water main sanitary sewer main services, fire hydrants, curb and gutter. Stormwater pond control structure, we're going to put clear water collection piping system in here, which is basically a some pump collection system. Pay, the two minutes pavement streets, concrete sidewalks, seating, hydro mulching and street lighting will all be included in this project, so the. Location is the same as what Barrett showed you, the preliminary cost estimate is six point five million dollars. This is a little bit less than last year's South Hill Farms, we don't have any regional components. As far as the Santa Suhrle station and any of that, so I also put the petition for improvements. In the report as an attachment and the preliminary access permit application on County Road seventeen at sixty. Eight. Avenue, yeah, sixty. Sixty eight street. So that that was approved for design purposes only, once plans are done, we'll send them to the county for approval for that, so that's where you were at, right, yep, and there's the preliminary plat, so.
A question, question, Jim, why was the the district boundary include the South Hill Phase one?
So there have to be turn lanes installed off of County Road seventeen and Seventieth Street and Seventy Third.
Right here.
Came up after, yep, that came up after Seventieth was already, or South Hill First was done, so we're going to do that work as part of this one. And Wisconsin, so benefit, assess to those benefiting in South Hill Farms first edition.
Okay, so it'd be a small amount, but it would be.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
So the county caught that then after the fact type of thing?
Yeah, it was, once things got done and they started looking at it and seeing how quickly things are going to go in that area, then it was, need to put in some turn lanes for it, so.
Okay, all right.
And part of the reason why it goes so far north is because this this isn't installing infrastructure that's going to benefit this whole area.
We're going to try to make the stormwater pond service as much as we can of the area north of Christiansen Boulevard.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, guys, questions?
Motion to approve the engineering, preliminary engineering report.
Brian, I was going to bundle all these together, we can take them separate, that's fine.
Oh, that's fine, we can, we can, we can bundle them all together.
Okay.
We've got the same engineering service agreement we've done with others, so.
Yeah, and it's based on that report, it's based on the South Hill Farms first edition and it's also just modified to the, to the. What the project entails, what this current project is, so we met last Tuesday with New Horizons Homes and they are excited to get going on this. And we talked about some, like I said, we talked about the stormwater pond and tried to utilize as much of that land as we can to. Drain, to store water for as much of the property as we can, so there, we're on board with them and moving forward.
Okay, so we'll approve the the service agreement and we'll direct the engineers to prepare plans specs for this development.
Correct. So, anybody want to make a motion for three?
So Brian did all second that.
Yep.
Brian, Dave, all right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right, and we'll move on to Horace Elementary First Edition, Barrett, you've got that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner or Councilmember Schmidt, if you don't mind, bring up PowerPoint again.
Yeah, I realize I blew through those.
Yeah.
Right here.
Correct, yep, thank you. All right, so what you have before you on this one, staff received an application for a plant in a zone change of a subdivision titled Horace Elementary First Edition. From Mark Lemare on behalf of the West Fargo Public Schools. This would combine two lots into one for a total of eight point zero nine acres approximately. It would propose a zone change from RE residential to PF public facilities. So this Horace Elementary, it's located along County Road seventeen north of law and as you can see in this illustration, the previous one that its own. RE residential, if you don't mind going to the next side, side, please. So I guess I'll just kind of break down the nuts and bolts of what their proposal is for the development of the site and then talk about. How their development applications will help assist them get to that goal. What they're proposing right now, as you see on this illustration before you, on the north side, there's a proposal to add a new addition, a new access point. Off of County Road seventeen that would terminate at a roundabout for the purposes of a bus drop off area. On the east side of the building, new parking stalls would be created and then on the south of the property. One of the access points in the south parking lot would be closed. So, oh, I should also add, also on the west side of the property, they're proposing to add a detention pond to deal with the runoff. So in order to get this accomplished, this is kind of a legacy site, it doesn't really match up with our current zoning ordinances. I just wanted to point out, Mr. Schmidt, if you don't mind going back to a prior slide. If you look at that weird U shape on the bottom, that is public right of way, their parking lot for that facility is parking right away. Or public right of way, also, if you don't mind going back, another additional slide again. I just wanted to point out on the east side of the property, there's a publicly dedicated frontage road that runs along the boundary of that property. In addition, the address of the property is based off of Third Avenue, which doesn't exist in any close proximity to the site. And then. Also with their proposal, you know, we don't want to run into issues again with setbacks, I, so hopefully the zone change will help to. Accommodate for this development, so at the end of the day, what they would be doing is they would be combining these two lots into one, rezoning it to public facilities. Vacating the south parking lot, vacating the frontage road. And then we would also be renaming the street in front of the south side of the school, the Ironwood Drive. To match up with the rest of the neighborhood and then the applicant, if this were to be approved, would then request a zone change to then. Address the property off of Ironwood Drive. When we talked to Cass County, the applicant secured a preliminary highway access permit on condition that this is approved by our city council. In terms of the dimensional standards, what what they have proposed, it'll still meet the rear setback requirements. However, it will not be restrained by height, there will be no limit on height, so if they wanted to build over. What is currently restricted under the RE. Zoning district, they would be able to build higher than that. Staff hasn't received any comments and therefore we recommend approval of the applications as stated in our staff report. Also, I have. Mark Lemare, he's with us tonight, if there's any questions for him and his staff, along with Tony Uco. I think Tony Uco is a participant, he's not a panelist, so if you wanted him to speak, he would have to be moved over as a panelist.
Yeah.
Technical. I don't see, who?
Were you looking for?
Tony Uco is their engineer. Let me see if I can.
I believe it's listed under his wife.
Oh, okay.
Heidi, there we go. I see him now. You there?
Tony, this is Tony, I'm on my wife's work computer at home here. Hence the nice picture.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, thank you, Commissioners. Basically, as you can see at the site plan, this is kind of a, this is an older model, we're actually working through design at this point, but. We've reached out to Cass County and we've talked with them about adding the turn lane into the dedicated bus drop off lane on the north side of the school. We're looking at restriping a portion of seventeen and extending the through lane past that intersection of the bus drop off, so we don't have any conflicts there either. As Barrett mentioned too, we are going to remove the southeast entrance because there is concerns with the queuing lane with parent drop off in the morning and pickup in the afternoon. So we are going to make the the southeast entrance disappear and we're going to move the entrance exit to the far southwest. Driveway and they'll snake through to give us more queuing lane to help alleviate any concerns on County Road seventeen. This has been reviewed by city staff and for and by the Cass County Highway Department too, so. Hence the kind of conditional use of the the permit from them pending any final designs, so. We are adding parking stalls on the east side and then we, for infrastructure purposes and runoff detention, we're adding a. It's a dry retention pond, so it'll hold water in our stormfall, our storm runoff events, but then drain down entirely within twenty four hours. So it'll be a dry pond for all all intensive purposes, but hold water when we do have runoff events.
And questions on the site?
Tony, you also want to talk about the multi-use path?
Yeah, the multi-use path too, we are dedicating a trail easement, multi-use path. That will continue the concrete trail that's already there to the north of us, we're adding a crossing there. And like I said, the the site plan's a little old, so the trail doesn't jog over back to the asphalt, it'll turn and go back into the right of way. Out of the frontage road that's being vacated at this point, so. Under a future project, that trail will ultimately connect further down to the south as improvements happen on County Road seventeen and within the city.
I do have a question here, so when you state that that gravel road, right, is it being vacated, is that going to be then? Ripped up and grass and that kind of stuff, because I know a lot of parents potentially park on that road and that, is that true, what's going to be done with that road then, or when you say vacate, what that, what does that mean, I guess, just to clarify?
When we say vacate, the frontage road has got a fifty foot wide parcel, basically where this frontage road land sits. We're vacating that land, so it's not dedicated as frontage road, but then goes back to the the overall area of the the school site. We've been discussing with the city and yes, it was discussed that that road will get removed, there really is no function for it anymore. So, yeah, it will be removed as part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can you explain a little bit more about the connection of the existing path to. To stay the frontage road on the south side of the property, did you say it would get developed as County Road seventeen gets worked down or what does that look like?
Yeah, so currently, you know, County Road seventeen's a rural section of road. Where the trail would be positioned would be right in the ditch line of County Road seventeen. Where you kind of can see where our dimensions are for the striping there. So until there's something that happens further down the line, we're not proposing adding any additional trail. We're setting up the infrastructure for it to continue on through the site, but at this point, we don't plan on filling in the ditch just because the stormwater infrastructure is not there to accommodate it.
So if foot pedestrian was going through there, what route would they take?
They would, they would take a sidewalk, if they were going to go to the school from the north, they could cross the the service access for the buses there and then head west on the north side of the school. Otherwise, they'd have to use the existing sidewalks that are on the south side of the the parent drop off loop. To come into the south entrance.
So that whole parking lot area would be that the path to get to connect up to that existing shore.
Correct, correct.
That's a little bit of a concern, yes, for me, that we we kind of lose some connection there, so. I guess I'll just refer to Barrett on that finding.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? Okay.
Very still to open the public hearing for this one.
Just gonna say I'm gonna open up a public hearing then, with that conversation. Don't know if there's any other questions or comments we need on the plat.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mark Lemare.
Hey, Mark.
Just, hi, so I know this isn't directly related to the plat, but I just thought I'd give you in the council, this is a little bit of additional information about. The design and how it is related to what was included in the bond referendum that was discussed earlier. So you can see on the plat itself, there's a fair amount of infrastructure that's being included here, the bus lane and and. Bus turnaround and the detention pond and changes to parking, all of that exceeds what was originally kind of envisioned with this project. And so when this project was originally envisioned by the school district, there are twelve classrooms at the school right now, we were anticipating adding. Twelve additional classrooms, which would bring it up to the standard size of what we consider a four track elementary school, so twenty four grades, serving grades K through five. Because of the budget constraints, we're at this point adding eight classrooms and we have designed for the remaining four. So those four additional classrooms would come on as a part of a future project, not included in this project that you're seeing this evening.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Comments for your public hearing?
Nothing from the, nothing from the chat or anything, I guess that does bring up a question, so Mark, thank you for the information. So where it says new addition, is that just the sizing for those eight classrooms or is that the? The eight classrooms would be smaller than that and that just shows your total footprint in the future?
Correct, the the area that's colored in and says new addition is only for those eight classrooms plus supporting spaces off to the, just to the left.
Those dotted lines, okay.
Yes, that's the future for classroom addition and then you'll also see surrounding kind of that bus turnaround. Would be future parking, so when that addition would come on, we'd have a a need for additional parking for staff. And it's envisioned that those would be met by that kind of the ring kind of around the outside of the bus.
Okay, thank you.
Reserve as much of the remaining green space on the site for outdoor activities as possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody got anything else they want to add or comment on?
Can you just run through the staging, I guess, I don't know. Tony completely explained it, but how how we're solving the issue of the cars coming up?
Yeah.
So currently, as as it sits today, there's, there's two entrances into the bus loop area and the parking lot there. Those are ninety-degree stalls currently and what we're showing is angled parking. So by eliminating the southeast driveway, we're able to create more stacking distance. Along third, within the angled parking area and then within the within the loop one-way area as well. So we went from, I can't remember the rough number, but I think originally it was about four hundred feet of stacking up to about eight hundred feet of stacking. So by eliminating that driveway, it just gives us a longer path for the the parent drop off loop. And then hopefully what that will do is increase the queuing space within the site rather than queuing up on County Road seventeen in the right turn lane.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, anything out there?
No, no.
And I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. And unless anybody's got anything else, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the plat.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
John, second.
John's a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion carries, move on to the rezone. I'll just open up for public hearing on that right away, being kind of discussed a lot of this, but Mark, if there's anything or you guys want to add in on this one for the rezone? Or Barrett?
I just think that this rezone will bring us into conformance with the city's expectations. So it makes logical sense since we're actually working on this project to do it at this time. And we worked with Barrett and city staff on a number of items addressing their concerns, both related to the plat and the rezone. So we, we are anticipating, for example, submitting for a new address. Once this all is, if this was all, was all approved, we would plan to work with the county engineering office. And so in any of the staff concerns, so I think it's the the timing is good. There were a number of surprises that we saw on this project, things that, you know, we didn't even anticipate or knew existed. Barrett mentioned, for example, the, how the our parking lot is dedicated to, you know, city. I kept asking them who we should send the bill to for all the snowing well that we've done for the last thirty years or whatever. Anyway, it's, there were just some surprises here and I think this is our chance to clean it up. And so the rezone is just a part of that.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Barrett, anything to add on that? I think that's probably what this is all about too, is to make sure that we're, get some stuff cleaned up from the past.
Yeah, I thought Mark summed it up very well. I don't have anything further than that.
Council or Dave, you seeing anybody, questions?
No comments right now.
Anybody else that I've getting comments? Otherwise, I'm gonna close the public hearing then on the rezone. And once you guys have any other questions on this, entertain a motion for the rezone. Chelsea and John, okay. All right, it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, rezone carries. Okay, then we'll move on to number Brenton, you got this one.
Okay. Next item here is regard to special election process. As some, as some would probably know, or many probably know, last week, we did notify the public through Facebook, city's website, we did a press release. It's, it's out there quite a bit that there is going to be a recall election or a recall election. Councilmember Schmidt and Fennel are facing that. There was a petition submitted to the city and they had sufficient answers. So anyways, the press release on that identified that the filing deadline for anybody that would want to run for those seats would be January fourth, four P M. They have to have their petitions submitted to myself here at City Hall by that time. The election date would be Tuesday, March ninth. We are working out, trying to work with Cass County on getting the details and coordinating where the election would be. Typically, elections or not elections, voting would be, because we would have to offer a in-person voting location. With COVID, absentee ballots are fairly common right now. But having a location for people to go physically if they choose to. So we're working into our options. Historically, the city, the city has used a senior center. That might be an option, but we'd have to work with the organization that has that area rented. Otherwise, we may be, we'll probably be able to use City Hall or we're looking at other options. So therefore, that's why we don't have a location identified specifically yet for that. But like I said, that would, the election date would be March, Tuesday, March ninth for in-person. What we need from the city council though is requesting council action on how would you like ballots, absentee ballots to be, the applications to be handled from the angle of in the last election, the presidential election we had in Horace or across the country, but for Horace, for example, Horace residents, if they voted absentee by absentee ballots for the last city council election, they automatically, automatically received an application from the county to be able to apply for their absentee ballot. Standard approach is that if somebody wants to vote absentee, they have to take it upon themselves to request that application from the county. And then they have to return that application and they get their ballot sent to them. So basically, do you want the applications sent to those that have voted with absentee ballots for the last election, or would you like them to have to request that? This is pretty common of requests during the COVID times because if you recall, like Cass County Commission, they had similar questions asked of them before the last election and also during the local elections last summer. So we're looking for the council's feedback on that, action on that. As for costs, I'm working with the county to get a good cost estimate of what it will cost for this special election. The county has not been charged us for their staff time to assist. And basically, they would handle after the petition deadline of January fourth, the ball is in the county's court, they would handle handling ballots, everything from there on. But their staff time, they wouldn't be charged us for that, but they, we would have costs tied to bringing the ballots, processing them, mailing them out, different costs like that. So there would be costs tied to the administration of the process, but the staff time from the county, we wouldn't be charged for. So I don't have an estimate from them. I am working with the county's office on that, so. But if you have any questions, like I said, answering questions, but like I said, I'm looking for direction from the council. If you want to send the applications out just up front, or do you want to have the voters request those if they would like to vote absentee?
Well, Brent, I have a few comments before we get to that point, actually. You know, we, we just had an election. We had two council members run unimposed. They won. It's, it's hard, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. You know, we, we have a group that is, to me, and I don't want to say this incorrectly, I but you know, it seems to me they're doing this purposely for their personal agenda, which is the wrong way to go if you want to be on a council and serve a city. You know, I, I wish people would take their time to do their homework, you know, and come and learn. You know, we do have public comment. It is unfortunate that we're going through COVID times and we're on Zoom. But most times throughout the years that I've served, we have had public comment and you know, we, we don't hear a lot. You know, a lot of people don't take the time to come. They don't take a lot of time to learn the process of how developments go through. How we go through the process of a twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. You know, so I, I think there's a lot of misinformation. And we do give opportunities for people to talk. You know, I know people are really burnt on special assessments in taxes. You know, city tax only makes up twenty, twenty-five percent of their tax bill. We don't. You know, we are not responsible for all the taxes that go out. The reassessment of everybody was dictated by the state. You know, I, I'm very much aware that people do not want to pay tax, more tax than they need. I, I agree with them. But we're working hard. But again, nobody's going to be hap, not everybody's going to be happy at the end of the day. I understand that. But I just ask, instead of causing a special election that is costing the whole city taxpayers money on something that is, I think BS, I think is wrong and unnecessary. That's all I have to say.
Um, anybody have any preference though as to how we want to handle the election? I guess I'm, either way, I mean, I almost don't think to it if they could just send out the ballots to the ones who requested the last time around. Brenton, were they going to, are they going to have an in-person down here then at the senior center or something, or what's the plan with that?
Yes, on March ninth is election day or date. And the location is being worked out. We we're coordinating with that group that does have the senior center to see if it works there or if it makes sense to have it in the council chambers or where. So we're working with senior center, also with Cass County Auditor's Office to determine that location. We haven't been able to lock that in just yet, so.
Okay.
But there will be a place in person.
Yep.
Folks would also have the opportunity to vote via absentee.
Okay. Well, I would, I would, my input, I would say that we should, you know, consider sending this ballot out for all the members that, you know, requested ballots last time. In the same way that we did the November election, so that we can maximize the number of people that are aware of this election that it's going on. Because it's going to be a challenge to make sure that everyone knows this is happening. And that it's important for everyone to, to really have their voices heard, so. I think it's going to be important for us to say, let's, let's proceed and be proactive and make sure that all the people that voted, you know, absentee, so forth, or voted last time in the last election, you know, literally last month, that they, they have that opportunity again.
Yeah. Chelsea, do you have a preference one way or the other on this one?
Well, I think people are getting used to voting by mail, so I think if we send it, they will probably send it back. And so in that case, it's probably the right choice, even though it is going to cost more money. It's probably the appropriate thing to do is to give them the opportunity.
Okay. Dave, just kind of query everybody as to if they have.
I would have the same as, as Brian and Chelsea, so.
Okay. John, you need?
I agree with that, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so Brian, why don't you make a?
So I'll make a motion that we direct the, the city staff to proceed to directly county election to send out the ballots to everyone that voted in the last election. As in absentee, I assume that's what they've all voted absentee in the last election, correct?
Yeah, it'd be, it would be send out applications to those that voted via absentee.
Right. We're basically, we're basically using that same list that they did absentee last time and then, you know, additionally going to vote in person, we will have, you know, to have one voting location for those that wish to vote in person over and above the absentee.
Okay. Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Okay.
Okay. Chelsea does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, so then we'll just proceed on with that then, Brenton.
Okay.
And then we move number twenty up right afterwards here, right?
We moved twenty up here. What you see, what you have before you is proposal from StanTech to work with the city to develop a special assessment policy. Discussing this with them after this proposal, one thing that we would be asking from them is to have increase, have, have a conference of public involvement. There is some, I believe, within the proposal here, however, special assessments are a very important topic in a community. And we want to make sure that there is an opportunity for public involvement throughout this process. And there are ways that it could be done, even if we can't meet in person, we could do them via Zoom or right, there's a handful of different ways to engage the public on that. But this policy is to have, you know, have that public room, StanTech come in, work with the city, help identify the best practices for how special assessment could or should be handled within our community. And what this would do is also give a predictable environment of how special assessments would be handled. We've been working towards having some of that consistency, but it would be working towards having an actual document laid out in the policy. Communities under ten thousand are required to have this poll, have a policy in place, but with how much activity we have going on in Horace, I think it makes sense. So like I said, what you have before you is a proposal for that. Their proposal comes in at just under fifteen thousand. What I would ask, since we had asked them to beef up public involvement is to allow up to eighteen thousand dollars for this. Where this would be paid from is general fund. We do have the dollars within general fund to be able to cover this project or this nature. So.
Yeah, I did think that's one of these we had talked about too, is we wanted to have some public forums on this to get people's feedback on it. Just to kind of, and then plus it's probably an educational process for everybody too to go through, you know, our current policies and procedures, how we operate with them right now and then going forward. You know, what are some of the you looked at, review them, you know, do we have the correct policies in place for what we need to do? Do we need to modify them? And if so, then in what direction, that kind of thing. So.
So Brenton, one question, can you provide some feedback on, on experience with StanTech and doing these kind of policy assessments for communities like us?
One advantage with working with them on this is that they do have experts that work with, that work with these different policies, working with special assessments. They're, you know, looking at national expertise. Being that we're doing all these meetings via Zoom, we're able to tap upon those resources a lot easier than we would otherwise. And the reason we bring forth StanTech is they worked with the city on the comprehensive plan, overall, the comprehensive plan. It's been a pretty good product there. And also, like I said, because they come forward with the experience of the financial side, also the engineering understanding and different perspectives there. So that's why you have the proposal from StanTech.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, we've talked about this for probably a long time now, you know, lots of different policies and different procedures and how we do things and now as we've been moving forward with some of, some of, basically last year with all the different special assessments that got in front of us. It's, I think it's time to start going through this now and try and come up, shine a lamp on what we call the city policy and how we handle special assessments. And work with them. So StanTech's got a pretty good background working with other entities like this, so I think this just makes sense for us to entertain this and start moving forward with these policies.
Absolutely, special assessments are the probably hottest ticket out there right now to, for controversy. And I think we, we learned a lot from it on things we need to work on and this is a great way to put it out there in policy, especially for everybody to understand, people to be a part of, everybody to have an opportunity. Especially for everybody to understand, people to be a part of, uh, everybody to have an opportunity to give their feedback. And, uh, you know, to put out better products at the end of the day.
Yep, and that, and that's, that's it. You know, we want the public feedback on this too, because that is, everybody gets affected by them. We all know that. We've all been touched. Um, so let's just make sure that we're doing everything correctly. And that, at the end of the day then, that. You know, I, I agree, nobody likes the special assessment taxes, but they were done fairly and correctly. And we had a policy and procedure that we followed and we're consistent with it. So. I think that's the big.
The opportunity for people to get away from the social media, you know, keyboards and actually participate and get involved and. It gives them, uh, uh, input and get educated at the same time.
Correct. And I, and that's good for all of us, you know, just to go review, have this big review session and, uh. And go through this, because this, this affects everybody, like I said, and I think this is a good idea to do that one. Good time to do it. Any other questions, comments from anybody? For those who wanna entertain a motion that we accept this proposal and, uh, start, start the process. And I also would entertain though too, Brenton, make sure that they understand we want some more, uh, public input meetings involved in this, uh, as well.
Yeah, and that's why we're asking for, uh, to be able to have a budget up to eighteen thousand for this, so we can have them beef up the public involvement component.
Yeah, perfect. So if somebody would like to make a motion, I think we'll, I think we'll even roll call this one, just because we're spending some money on this one. So anyway, somebody make a proposal first and then we'll go from there.
I move that we, uh, move forward with this, uh, special assessment committee as directed.
Dave makes a motion, Brandon's a second. Okay, I'll roll call it. John? Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, emotion carries unanimously. Okay, so let's let the Stan Tech know and then we'll start winding up the times and procedures. Now, you know, the times that they wanna do these things with them, we'll work with them to set that up, so. Alright, let's move on to fourteen then. Jimmy, I think you've got this one.
I do, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Zach Hadding from our office and I will be discussing these next three items with you. Uh, number fourteen, as you see here, change order number two and time extension request, those are both. Uh, lumped into the change order, so it's just one, one item. The change order itself increases the contract amount by a pretty substantial amount, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand and fifty dollars. And extends the completion date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, it's kind of an involved change order, involves a lot of dirtwork, so I'll let Zach go through and give you the kinda. Lift notes version of what this, what this change order entails. Um, we do have a contingency on this project. This would wipe that out. Uh, this project has not been final bonded yet. And there is additional money within the temporary construction bond for this, for this, uh, change order. And this change order was requested by the developer. There is an opportunity for the lots that he has. And, um, he requested this additional work to, for a, a business up to on his behalf. So. I'll let Zach go through the specifics of this one.
On this, uh, change order number two. It would, we discovered that there is more.
Zach, can you, Zach, can you try and change your audio? We're getting a lot of weird feedback. Are you guys hearing that?
Yes, I was.
Sounds really digitized, digitized. Is any, any update, change your microphone? Nope.
That didn't help.
What about now? Okay. Okay, so, um, like I was saying, uh, there was additional dirt that needed to be moved in order to get the lots in. The Maple Lake subdivision up to Lomar elevation. In addition to that, there were multiple piles of rubbish on site that were not present during, um, the design phase. And that also added to the excess material that needed to be moved. That excess material is about fifty-two thousand, three hundred cubic yards. Item number two during construct, or during, uh, topsoil removal operations. The site was estimated to have one foot of topsoil across it. And on the east side of the project, about mid-project, the contractor ran into an area where there was three feet of topsoil encountered. So item number two is paying for that additional two feet of topsoil that was moved, um, that had to be moved. For Lomar fill, you have to compact clay on top of clay. You can't have a topsoil layer in between. So we had to get all the topsoil out of there. Number three. The owner came to us and as part of the project, we were installing sanitary and water services. Um, to the south of a hundred and second avenue. Um, but, and paving the road, but we were not bringing those lots up to Lomar elevation. So item number three, the, the developer requested that we change order in this work. Um, as he was, um, going to sell these lots as part of phase one, so. That is item number three. Number four is the additional topsoil that will be required to be moved, um, as part of that. And then item number five is the time extension. No small utilities are able to be brought into the site due to the time of the year. So the, uh, developer was requesting that we extend the completion date. To allow for, um. Free, a free thaw cycle, so we can get a lot of the settlement and the roadway out of the way through this free thaw cycle. And then pave the roads and whatnot next year.
So as the letter indicated from the developer, he understands that these additional costs will be solely benefited on his properties. And that they would, you know, special assessments would be used to fund this additional work, so.
Anybody got any questions on this?
So the, the big point is that, you know, with this large of a change order. This is obviously amiss by the developer and, and these costs will continue to be contained within the. Um, the boundary of that development, they would, the, the, the district boundary for this. You know, Maple Lakes Estates is not gonna affect other residents, other, outside of this Maple Lake development, correct?
These are all local improvements right now. The lot fill is all building up the lots in Maple Lakes. It's not a regional component. The only thing that was regional in this project was, uh, sanitary sewer lift station enforcement. And this, this is all just local to the subdivision work. Okay.
And if I'm clear, when we talked earlier, Jim, you said this wasn't put in. In the original part, it would have been something that would have been, uh, done after the, afterwards. We still are under temp bonding, so, uh, believe it or not, it makes sense to me.
Okay. Any other questions, concern?
So what was the story with all the? Stuff that was dumped on the site that wasn't there before?
So this site has been tried to be, this site has tried to be developed by a multitude of people. And it seemed like every time it changed hands. It was used as either a landfill, a storage yard, or a stockpiling location for. Material. Um, one person that owned it was a concrete contractor, so there was concrete that was rubble that was stockpiled out there. I don't know if the intent was to move it at some point in time. Then it got sold and, um. There was a lot buried within other materials, so you wouldn't have seen it. It wasn't like a big stockpile of rubble. And once they started moving the dirt on the site and doing the earthwork and the grading of it. This came to light, to the point where there was even rebar puncturing tires on off-road dump trucks and stuff. It was. The site was just a lot more dirty than anyone expected when it was originally done, so.
Okay. John, you're on mute.
Yep. Hey, Jim, can you verify the boundary lines that are staying within the, uh, development area?
Yeah, base, let me, oh, I can't bring it up. It's. So it's the, would be the west, so the east edge of the. Maple Lake Estates is the west line of Country Acres. The north boundary is County Road or, uh, Hundredth Avenue. The south is seventy. Second? No, uh. Hundred and, hundred and fourth?
Hundred and fourth, yep.
Hundred and fourth, and then it goes, is a quarter mile or a half mile to the west of seventy-second. I have to bring it up. So it'll be right to the own, the area that it's directly benefiting.
Uh, and that, that would make sense to me.
Yeah, it's a pretty big change order, so that's why we gotta look at this a little bit more, pretty big one.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, that's gonna be the bigger challenge. Are there, are they gonna potentially find other issues, other, you know, soil issues when they get into this? Because this was a low area, right? You know, during, during the last flood, so hopefully this, this is essentially raising that up to get this out of the area, out of the floodplain, correct?
That is, uh, that is why there's Lomar fill, yep.
So that's part of the reason.
They've installed the water or the storm sewer, the water main and most of the sanitary sewer, so anything that was unforeseen would have. Should have come up by now, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can remember in the last flood, big flood event down there, there was a fellow windsurfing out there to give you an idea what the depth of the water. Yeah, hopefully they don't find any more, you know, stuff in the dirt, you know, as they're working through there. But I didn't realize that there was that much debris and rubbish that had been left out there after all this time, so.
And we had looked at with the contractor, the potential for hauling it off-site and disposing of it. And it was, since it was so contaminated with topsoil and clay. It would have to be waste, couldn't be recycled. So they're going to bring in a screener and screen off what they can, so that it can be properly disposed of and not just. Wasted.
Yeah.
That got to be very expensive if you were to dispose of it all.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I can see that. Wow. Yeah, I think this is.
They're moving the ex- the extension date to June thirtieth, just because of, well, because of all the, the work that's going on and they couldn't get everything done this fall anyway. Right, that was.
That is, there are strict. Yeah, there are strict requirements on a little more fill as far as compaction requirements. And once there's moisture requirements and once it gets to this time of year, well, in a traditional this type of year. There's not many drying days and there's not many, you have to maintain optimal moisture, so.
Yeah, like I said, pretty big, large, pretty large change order there, so. Okay. Any other questions or concerns on this one?
So the boundary quarry that came up, Martin posted it here, so we've got it. It would be the area bounded by the thirty. So there's Country Acres, it wouldn't be extend to the full br- limits. It would just be where that thirty is centered. If you can bring that up, Brian. So which document? The one that Martin just posted in the chat? So it'd be that area that the thirty, just, just the area that touches the thirty, those three, those three pieces. Or no, it wouldn't. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It would be this right there. Yep, yep, yep. Go back up to the right, right there, that little bit. Nope. Where the zero touches, the top of the zero, that piece in there is Maple Lakes. That's where it'll go.
Right, right here.
To the right.
Oh, right here, or here.
There.
So, so then why is this district boundary, this, this, cause this covers north of?
It's for stormwater improvements.
So. For the water. For wa- water sewer supply, right?
Sewer and storm sewer, yep. But for this change order, it would be confined to just the area.
So how, how does that get, because this is all lumped into one? Project like that? How does that work?
We break the quantities out.
But I mean, you know, for this, you break the qua- quantity, or you, you're saying you break the quantities out. For, well, I, I'm, I'm missing that. I'm missing that, Jim, how that.
We keep track of how much it costs to do the work local, and then that amount gets assessed.
Okay, so there essentially be two projects within this one.
Right.
Hey, Jim, so I'll, I'll challenge you. You know, we, we, I, I, I'm gonna be supportive with you on this, believe it or not. But I think somehow, even though we have not gone through the exercise of what we approved a few, few minutes ago about the special election process. How do we define that these dollars will be kept to those thirty, to that section and not put on? The other way, because believe me, I don't have a lot of faith all the time in our special assessment committee. Because I don't think they totally understand the whole process to begin with, but that's another discussion. But how do we define?
Make it part of your motion, John.
What's that?
Make it part of the motion.
But can we document it at the same time? Different.
Through, through the motion and when we do the special assessment, we'll have that broken out.
So how do, how do we break that out as part of that, just this cost for this?
It'll be the local improvements to Maple Lake Estates. And only Maple Lake Estates.
Okay, so I would approve the change order, number two, to stay within the boundaries. Of Maple Lakes Estates only.
Say the local improvements, John.
Local, local improvements.
Yep, yep. I'll second that.
Okay, Jim, that's alright. That's what you're looking for? So we localize? John's made the motion. Now get a second.
Brian, second.
Alright, so all in favor, say aye. Okay, motion carries. Time extension request, I suppose there's no way they're gonna get that done, like you said, Jim, just because of the way the clay and everything, so.
Yep, that's, that's in with, uh, in with the change order, so that's nothing separate, Brian, Corey.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the time extension request, guys? Like I said, I don't think there's a lot of options here. They're gonna have to.
I move that we, uh, accept the time extension request.
It's part of the change order, right? It's already been approved.
Oh, well, it's had two lines there. That, that's all that we have our thing, so.
We're approved and fine. I just wanted to double check being a separate line item. Okay, so then we're good with fourteen, so we'll move on to fifteen.
Okay, water sewer storm is street improvement district number twenty twenty dash two, eighty-first avenue. This is south side of the new high school. As you recall, this project was bid out earlier this year. At the time, Lakeview first edition was in the plating stage. Lakeview first edition was never planted, so the city ultimately got some right of way to construct this road. There got to be some discussions with the school district upon special assessments and some other items, so it got delayed with that. Uh, eventually, the right of way was secured from the landowner and the easement was granted. This was done a couple of weeks ago. A big component of this project was getting a storm sewer outlet from the high school site. There is some concern that in the spring after the snow melt, if we get any snow. The high school site wouldn't drain very well. So with this project. Up in the air as to if it was going to get completed this year or not, the school had requested their contractor put in some temporary. Storm sewer with marginal benefits, I believe is the wording they used. And it, and that would alleviate some of the potential internal flooding in the spring. And their price came back quite expensive. So we reached out to the contractor, issued notice to proceed. Visited with them, and at the time, they weren't interested in starting it this year. They were going to start it next year. Their crews were already laid off. This was a little bit before, hello, uh, Thanksgiving. Crews were laid off, equipment was all back in the yard and, and they didn't think they'd be able to get to it. So we, we talked to them and really all we needed was the storm sewer connection to the high school. After some deliberating with the contractor on additional mobilization, demobilization, and then some. I don't know what you want to, if they call it, you know, like December work, some stuff they'd have to do for that. Uh, it was, they requested twenty five thousand dollars for a mobilization, a demobilization, and additional work this late in the year. And they would get the work done. They started last Monday. And due to the favorable weather, they're going to work through this week and then they're going to be done. So they've requested the twenty five thousand dollars and then an extension to November. Seventh of two thousand and twenty one. Their intention is to get the roadway open as soon as they can, hopefully before the high school opens. But they weren't willing to commit to that just yet because that wasn't part of the original contract to have it open prior to the high school. So the, um, this will be one of the first jobs that they pave coming out of the gate next year, I was told this afternoon. But they wouldn't, couldn't commit to an earlier, earlier completion date. So, um, that's where we sit on, on this change order.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments on this one, guys?
Can you clarify schools' input again on this?
What was that, John? I couldn't hear you.
Could you verify the school's input on this and what they, your comment?
So we did reach out to the, uh, high school engineer who was in touch with, with Mark Plummer. Um, I don't know if they're still on the line or not, if they would be willing to talk. And we did, we did meet with or talk to them and they talked it over with amongst themselves. Their bid was over forty thousand dollars, I believe, for their work that would be a stopgap with marginal results. And this is a permanent solution, so the twenty five thousand dollars was much less than that. Uh, we haven't had a conversation yet about, um, if the school would be willing to pitch in on that twenty five thousand dollars. Otherwise, it will be assessed to the, to the project. It wouldn't be assessed to one, one benefit. But, um, we have talked about those discussions. We just haven't had a chance to do them yet. So we did, I did reach out the day that the contractor told me they were, could potentially get it done. You know, we just, we've had some phone conversations since.
I mean, this, this is essentially allowing the school to decide whether they want to, because, because it's saving the school money. They can decide if they want to just roll this into the overall project assessment, right? Or if they want to pay this fee outright.
Well, we can, we have to talk to them about it, yeah.
Right, but I mean, it's, I mean, it's, that's the goal, is that we're saving the school money in the first place. And then, uh, and then this, you know, we'd have to work out with the school the payment method of whether just roll it in. Or, or, um, or pay it beforehand.
Sure.
Correct.
Right now, it'll be a project cost.
So technically, we're just adding this to the project cost without knowing totally where the funds are going to come from.
Right now, it's just a project cost, correct?
But the school has approved this, making this change, correct?
They were aware of the change. There, there was no action on their part.
Right, but I mean, in essence, there's an additional cost and, you know, they would be impacted by this. I would, I would assume that they would be, you know, positively benefited by this because it's going to save them money.
Well, it solves their, their drainage problem in the spring.
Mark is still on the call, everyone.
Yeah, I was just going to add really quick that, uh, so change orders, we typically, you know, you don't run them by. The other parties, that's a decision by the city when we do that. Um, what all he, all Jim is referring to though is just. We would handle that cost as a typical cost change order, any cost that we'd have with any other project, the same fashion. Unless the school district wants to work with city to, where, you know, that cost may be covered differently. But the fallback is through the assessment district that has been established for this project and that's our plan to cover it. Or that cost right there, and that's within the dollars that we anticipated for this project, like our contingencies and everything. We should have plenty to cover.
Well, that's fine, but we've, uh, we've approved things in the past and then later on, we end up on the news over it. Yeah. I don't want to see that happen again. Uh, I, I don't think Mark's ever been the problem. It's been great working with him. I, I think that, I think it makes sense to me, but you know, I, I don't want to get stuck with the, the bill at the end of the day either.
Yeah. All right, any other comments on those guys or? You want to do?
Dave, did you say Mark was still available or not?
He's still on, yeah. He, he's just muted, so if, if you have a question, I guess directed at Mark, he's still on the phone.
I would really love to hear Mark's input on this. If he had any comments, it'd be appreciated, appreciated.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, what's driving this unfortunately is the fact that the, um. The easement that was required for the infrastructure was significantly delayed. You may recall, I had made a plea with the council earlier to get, um, eighty first or now eighty second. Installed just because of the infrastructure, the needs that, um, the school district had to move water off of our site. And so we had continued to, um, you know, press on Jim and, and Brenton. Um, throughout this project to kind of move this along. And, um, it just, by the time it was essentially wrapped up, it was very late in the season. And so, um, that was putting our project in jeopardy. Ultimately, the resolution was to come to terms with the contractor to do some late season. Sort of upcharge, I guess, to, um, get them to remobilize and to pay for some winter conditions. You know, they're dealing with frost and other things potentially now. Um. Unfortunately, this was, was beyond the school district's control, um, in terms of, you know, that particular easement. So, uh, it, it definitely is very beneficial to us. Um, you know, that easement had been, had been able to have been, you know, signed off on earlier in the process. The work, you know, could have gone on without these winter conditions and the need to remobilize, but that's not where we're at right now. So, um, I, I think, and it's beyond me now to really answer the question kind of about funding for this. Obviously, I mean, the city will be made whole one way or another through its special assessment process. Um, whether or not, you know, Jim and Brenton are able to, you know, negotiate something with the administration on, on a cost share upfront. And there are some benefits to that, obviously, um, since, you know, if it's paid for upfront, then it doesn't have to go through the, you know, the markup set come along with special assessments, obviously. But, um, that, that isn't a cross question really I can address. Um, but I do know that the infrastructure going in, um, our entire project breathed the collective sigh of relief. Seeing that, um, those improvements were in.
Yeah. All right, anybody, any other questions? John or Dave, Brian, Chelsea?
Well, I guess I would generally reiterate what, uh, John had said. I mean, I understand Mark's position and, and his statement of that it's not his decision to make. Um, but, you know, this has been a very strong push from the school directly. Um, and, uh, we've had challenges in the past, uh, with some of the, the, that funding and, and directing of that funding. And, and we're willing to move forward here because we know this is an important project to the city as a whole. But I hope that the administration and, uh, the powers that be take that into consideration. That this one specific project is keeping your other project online. And I know that in the end, so the, the areas are going to pay for it. But, uh, I, I just don't want that, as John said, to come back and somebody, you know, telling us that they, they shouldn't help cover this, so.
Okay. All right.
I hope Mark, I wasn't putting you on the spot with it all. Um, I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I do too. All right, uh, anything else, guys? Otherwise, I want to entertain a motion here to. Change order.
I'd make a motion to approve the change order.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that, Dave.
Yep, John makes the motion, Dave does the second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, Jimmy, you got sanitation, uh, sewer there, sanitary sewer on one hundredth avenue.
Do, yes. Uh, this project is the sanitary sewer lift station, forced main to Vistos addition from Maple Lake Estates. Lift station is in, the forced main is in for the most part. It won't be able to get the seating and the mulching. Done and the controls for the lift station this year has to do with getting the power out to Maple Lake Estates. Similar to the Maple Lake Estates, uh, construction project. This is the, the same, the, uh, same on that. So, um, as you can see, the completion was November seventh, and we moved to June one, twenty twenty one. And, uh, in, in conjunction with Maple Lake Estates. So before Maple Lake Estates can be brought online, this has to be done, and this will get done at the same time, same contractor. So, um, I anticipate, I actually think this will get done earlier. Just the only thing remaining will be some, uh, seating. And some other mulching work that typically isn't done in the wintertime.
Okay.
No time, no cost on this one, just time.
Right, just a time extension.
Yep.
It's not affecting any other projects and it's not delaying any other projects, so.
It's not, no. This is right now currently solely for the purpose. It's, it's, um, it's a regional type infrastructure improvement. But Maple Lakes would be the only one that's being held up by it.
Okay. All right, anybody have any other questions on that?
I'll, I'll improve the change order.
I'll second.
Okay, John and Brian. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Let's go on to seventeen.
Brett, do you have anything you want to show here?
No, this is mainly a discussion update. Uh, uh, Jim will probably take the lead more than I will. But what I want to do is get an update for council on, it actually should be twenty twenty one water projects. Uh, this regards to the waterline project and the connection to Cass rule. Uh, to make sure the council is apprised of this as much as possible. Uh, I think my goal would be to have this, about every other month, probably give you an update. That way you are in the loop with what's going on, where we're at, and then as we go through the construction of this. Uh, obviously, you'll get updates a lot more aggressively, but, uh, I want to make sure that you're aware of where we're at, where, what engineering is tackling. And if there's any hurdles that we have to tackle.
Okay, Jim, you must have the.
Yeah, so the two projects that we're talking about here are, number one, the water main replacement or is proper. And the other project is the connection to Casperell Water Users. Uh, both of these two projects are going to be put before the state water commission at their February meeting. That's next time that they meet. State Water Commission is in charge of, it has a potential for a sixty percent, uh, grant to forty percent local cost share. Um, as part of that process, we have different, we have avenues that we have to follow for the federal requirements. Uh, both, on both projects, federal agencies have been solicited for their comments. We've received those back. The water replacement project has a virtual public input meeting available on the city's website. I believe Hannah was able to get that up. So if you go and provide comments on that, comments are going to be received until December, December twenty first. And shortly within this week, if not the first part of next week, we'll have the virtual public input meeting for the Casperell Water Users connection. Up on the, uh, website and ready for public input and comments. So I'd like to get all the comments put together before we submit the cost share application to the state water commission. Like I said, they require that information here, uh, before the first of the year for their February meeting. And that's, uh, where we sit right now. Uh, currently, the funding sources are going to issue for state water commission with that sixty forty. The locals share that. We can use a drinking water state revolving fund loan, uh, two percent low interest loan. And then we still have some other areas that we are, we are, uh, avenues that we are exploring right now. US Army Corps of Engineers, there's some diversion money, some diversion settlement money that we've got access to. And some other programs that we're, we're looking at at the time. So, uh, once we get all the comments and we solidify the project going forward, we'll get the preliminary engineer report completed. With the agency SOBs and the, uh, public input that we can address at that time. So, um, that's out on the website for the replacement and we'll look for the connection to Casperell shortly.
Okay. So Jim, we, I know we talked about this one other time. When are we looking at? I mean, if we can get the, the hookup to Cass rural, say, completed by, when are we looking at that? I mean, if, let's just say worst case scenario, the work with the weather and all of, you know, things like that, what are we looking at?
Provided we can get the funding in line in February, March, we can start. May, June-ish. It's, and the connection to Casperell, it basically is a water meter. It's a large meter and a transmission line to the city, so it's not a terribly involved project. And the meters are built and then they're dropped into places, kind of one piece unit. Um, I still think we'd be pretty, looking pretty good to be November of twenty twenty one for a completion, provided everything goes good with the funding.
Okay, so like November, we'd be gone, we'll call hot. I mean, basically, we turn the lever and things will be moving in November then. You know, that's what we can forecast right now.
Right now, yeah. And like I said, if something comes up in, in February with state water commission and we don't get any of that money, then we. Then look at how we want to fund it.
One, one thing I do want to chime in on is, uh, Jim mentioned the presentation is up. They'll be up tomorrow. Uh, staff was, was working towards getting that together, but it'll be up tomorrow. Um, and then just stressing, uh, you know, Jim mentioned all the different funding avenues. Uh, but one to keep in mind is if we do a low interest loan, uh, intentions are if we get cost shares. But also funded through the actual utility itself. And that's what we're trying to work towards is the utilities to actually support, uh, their own capital improvements. That's the long-term goal of it. So, uh, just want to make sure you, you, the council knew about that.
And, uh, in terms of that timing, Jim, that you're saying November would include not only the hookup. But would it also include the, um, replacement of water lines or the water main stuff that you want to do that would all occur during the summer, correct?
Would occur in the summer. That's, that's best case scenario, yes.
Okay, but that, but the idea is when we turn on, all of the work is generally done and we're not just turning on water and putting it through our existing pipes. And initially, your first estimate for the, for the meter pit for the hookup was around eight hundred and some thousand dollars?
That was just for the meter pit. It's, uh, over, we've got some transmission piping in there now to get the water main, water down to the tower at a blend point. So, um, the cost on that one, I don't have it in front of me, Brian. It'll be in the input meeting though.
And did, is there, that's okay. Is there a general cost yet or estimate on the water meter? Or not water meter, sorry, excuse me, water main or water line replacement project? Was there a general cost there yet?
Yes, it was about three and a half million. It was broken up into three phases. So one phase was horse proper, and that was replacement of mains, valves, fire hydrants, services and curb stops. Then there was another portion of the project that was third, fourth streets and Arrowwood, which is replacement of gate valves, installation of gate valves. Curb stops on third and fourth street, and then the third part of that project area, C, was a looping redundant water main down to Visto's industrial addition. Visto's right now is a bulk water user, Casperell water users, and that is. And that is within the city of Horus service area, so. Let me do the estimate, I'm trying to.
And when you're talking about curb stops, the city is generally, what you're stating is on people's property. We will go to the curb stop. This will not be a replacement from there to their house, correct?
Correct, yeah. Typically, the curb stop in the new subdivision, we installed them about two feet with inside the property line, inside the right of way. Some of the older parts of town, they kind of vary.
Sure. But we would hopefully also, if, if we would hopefully look at offering an opportunity for residents, if somehow, if it can be managed through the project, that if they wanted to replace from there to their house, there might be that potential to hopefully save some costs as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the.
This does include, it does include, in many cases, they're not sure if they have curb stops in many of the properties. So this is installing curb stops where they can't find them or they don't know where the curb stops are.
Okay, cool, thank you.
We have an item in there for that. Project cost was 3.5 for area A, 815 for area B and $600 for area C.
Okay.
Dave, Brent, a question for you, I think if I remember correctly, we've got, we were talking about some water rate increases coming here. I'm wondering if we should, being we're talking about a November hot start with this thing, we should probably delay that, I think. I'm you know, that's probably going to be a little sooner than that, but I'm wondering if we should probably put, should delay that. They say like six months.
Yeah, you would be able to. If you were to do, delay those, my suggestion would be you do, you know, if you want to go six months for that first rate increase, we were originally going to do that in January. That would push it to July. And then how you'd handle it second rate increase. We can lock into data as it gets close, however. I think your target would be around after we've gone live or we anticipate going live with Casper rule for about a month, you know, or at least one billion, full billion cycle. Then the second billion cycle would be, we go live. Now, I don't know if we need to have a specific date locked in. Or if you want to say, you know, come, if we're targeting November, just say come December, the December billing cycle would be that.
I'd say we could probably go with that for right now, based upon what we know today. Something happens, we don't get materials, we can't get the thing done on time. I think then we'd have to, you know, probably revisit this again as well. But I mean, if we just go with what our assumptions are at this point, that we're looking at November hot. You know, but that's, that's what I'm thinking right now.
And if you guys were to do that, that would take council to make a motion for that. If that's what, something that you would like to do. Well, I make sure that when we do go live with Casper rule or shortly thereafter, we are at that, you know, full rate. Because that's when we're going to be having a lot more expenses tied to the water, cost of water.
Right, I agree. And I understand that too. I'm just thinking that it might, you know, we might be a little premature here with this. We have, we're gonna have to wait till November to go go hot. So I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, guys.
I would tend to agree that we should think about doing that because then it'll allow us to get a better understanding of these costs of the projects and, and what other sources of funding and stuff that you've got. And related to this, as Brenton said, the focus is that the utility itself will pay. So there won't be any additional assessments or tax increases or anything related to these projects. So I'd say we wait, just as Brenton said, after we're, after we're turned on and we have a cycle, we can move forward with a second one if needed or however that gets us to whatever rate we need. That's comparable to what half of the current city pays for related Casper water.
Yeah.
So my, if you're to make a motion, my recommendation would be just delay the rate increases by six months for each one, the first and second increase. That would probably be the simplest way to do it. And then if we need to make.
Fairest way to do it right now, I don't know, John, Chelsea, Brian, any feedback on that or just?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion then that we delay the water rate increases that had been planned for six months each.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dave makes the motion, Brian does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, okay, so yeah, let's, let's do that, Brenton. I think that's just the fair way to do it. So, all right. Anything else you guys want to talk about with the water projects coming up here? Anything else?
I didn't have anything else on it, so.
Okay. Then we'll move on to 18. Lucas, you got that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm up again. This is a settlement agreement that the city council directed our office to draft at a city council, a special city council meeting on November 18th. This is in regard to the complaint that the city filed to prevent Mr. Star from installing that wind turbine. And so what this does is basically just dismisses that complaint or the city agrees to dismiss that complaint if the parties execute this agreement. And under this agreement, all the whereas clauses basically just give a procedural history of how we got to where we are today. And then the main agreement itself is just in section one of the agreement. And that just says that the city agrees to dismiss its complaint filed against the applicant related to the installation of the wind turbine tower and related components on the property. In return, the applicant agrees not to erect, construct, maintain or use the wind turbine tower or its components without obtaining a conditional use permit and/or building permit from the city. The applicant agrees to cooperate with the city in reapplying for a conditional use permit and/or building permit before erecting, constructing, maintaining or using the wind turbine tower or its components upon the property. The remaining sections, Mr. Mayor, are just legalese that we include in our agreements. And so that is before the city council tonight for approval. I believe Mr. Star has already received a copy of this agreement for his review and execution as well. And so that's, that's where we are. So if there's any questions related to that agreement, please let me know and I can attempt to answer those questions. If there are no questions, then we'll just take action on this agreement.
Yeah, let's see, but there's another question. Pretty much discussed this at their special meeting, so I don't think there's no nothing new in here, so. I'll accept the motion to accept the settlement.
So moved.
Yeah. Dave makes a motion. Chelsea does a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And motion carries. Brenton, you've got the next one, number 19?
Hey, I, we have Becky on the line to ask Becky to actually do a run through of the budget amendment number two. To give you just a preview, we're not asking amend all the budgets that we have for the city. Just a few of them and Becky will highlight those changes for you. And if you have any questions, high level, where she can address, I'll be available.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Brian, I did have a PDF, I'm not sure if you received that.
Did you email that?
I gave it to Bobby, so.
Would it be in the council packet?
Yeah, for number 19, hopefully.
Okay, let me see if I can pull it up. This isn't it.
I'll forward it to you right now, I apologize. Like Brent said, the other funds are doing well and are on track. So the only two items that we're going to talk about are the highway fund and the sewer fund. So the first one, the highway fund. We kind of saw this happening with COVID. Our tax distribution revenues are down by approximately 30,000. And so we're mending the budget down to 140,000 versus 170. And we are, are going to forego transferring money in and allow the fund just to be supported by the fund balance, which was pretty healthy at the beginning of the year. In the expenses, some of the, hold on, I have the wrong comments and the wrong thing, I apologize.
Is that here?
Yeah. Those are, those are water issues, I apologize. So some of the issues in the water fund are repairs and maintenance, but it's due mainly or in the highway funders due to mean to, to vehicles and equipment or higher than usual, as well as some electricity issues. That's what was happening in there. The Glacier Services are, are correct for professional services. For just grading roads, carrying gravel, getting gravel in, clearing out some ditches, stuff like that. Everything else seems to be kind of on track. Other than that. Any questions on the highway fund? The sewer fund, the main thing for that, it is, it is doing really well and in holding itself. We are bringing this amendment for increasing or to establish a reserve fund of about 20,000 for this year. The main reasons for establishing that is just for emergency needs in the future to kind of start growing a reserve fund. But it also helps us leverage low interest loans through the state. The goal is that we would have at least a year's worth of payments like set aside if we were ever needing to take out a loan for any sewer projects. And that puts us in a better position so that we wouldn't have to rely just specifically on special assessments that I would be able to carry that debt through the utility and cover that. Any questions on sewer?
Well, makes sense.
That's all I had, if the action would be that you would approve the budget amendment.
Well, one thing I do want to stress really quick to council, when you look at the highway fund, the reason for not transferring the 30,000 in from general fund is we have a healthy fund balance in highway. But we want to keep the greatest flexibility in general fund. If you, your highway funds have more restrictions on how you can use those dollars versus general fund is pretty broad. So we're trying to keep the most flexibility with those dollars in general fund. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. That's the reason why we're wanting to spend off fund balance too.
Okay. Yeah, anybody have any questions on this? It's pretty cut and dried, we've done, had a couple of these now, so.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Chelsea, do you approve the budget amendment?
Okay. Okay, Brian made a motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to 21 then. Lucas, you've got that one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for this one, the city already has, or had an agreement with Midwest Inspection Services to conduct commercial building inspections. They, that previous agreement was for specific projects like the school. Now the city wants to retain Midwest inspections on a more permanent basis for various inspections in the city. So what this agreement does is just outlines that, the responsibilities and rights of the parties when it comes to a more permanent inspection role that Midwest will have with the city. The responsibilities are basically the same as they were before, as far as what Midwest will be providing to the city. And then the fees associated with those inspection services will remain the same as well. Building inspections, minimum of one hour is $80. Mechanical inspection, $80 an hour, and then plan review, $80 an hour. So all this agreement does, again, is just outlines the party's rights and responsibilities as it relates to inspection services for the city of Horus provided by Midwest Inspection Services.
So Lucas, my question, is that one of the reasons for the changes is the term of this agreement?
So the previous agreement that the city entered into was a one-year term and it automatically extended for an additional one year. So that previous term or the original term was set to expire December 31st of this year. However, because the parties are entering into it an entirely new agreement, this new one will actually supersede the previous agreement. In this one, the term is, I believe it's the same where it's one year. And then it'll automatically extend for an additional one year unless the parties decide to terminate sooner.
So in essence, the rates and so forth are the same, it's just the, in the same model, it's just updating the, in terms of the language, the legal language for the kinds of services that we would request of them, or what was the major change?
Oh, again, before the, the previous agreement that the city had with Midwest only related to specific projects that the city actually had in the works. This one opens the door to any time that the city wants them to do an inspection or a planner view of any project, the city can just call them up and say, okay, hey, will you help us with, with this residential project or this commercial project? Or if there's an industrial project in the city for something like that. And so that's, that's what this one does.
Right, thank you.
And this one is, it's a one-year term, which it'll commence on the effective date and then expires December 31 of 2021. And then it'll automatically extend for one year after the expiration date unless either party provides notice that it's intended to terminate.
So one thing I do want to touch base really quick on is the reason for this is one, to cover us for where we've had to pull Midwest Inspection Services in to help us this year. And then also, like Luca said, it covers us through then to next year without an act renewal. Where we use Midwest Inspection Services is typically for commercial or industrial buildings, buildings that take more time and expertise. Our staff, they do a great job. They are working excellent on the residential side. And one of our billion inspectors is, well, actually both of them, but one is taking more of a lead role with the commercial side. But commercial billing inspections and planning review is a different animal than a residential house. Lot more, lot stricter requirements for those commercial properties. And we want to make sure we do them right. So Midwest has a lot of expertise with us, so we pull them in to help, help our staff out with that. And also so they don't get a huge backlog. We've had problems before where backlogs for a building permit were weeks, if not about a month. So we want to make sure that we don't run into those situations and continue to run into them. So it's there as a safety net for us.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on that? Otherwise, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept.
Don't move.
Second.
Brian made a motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Brenton, you got the next one, number 22.
Hey, the next one, this is one to update council and two, to get the final check off from the council to be able to do, this is within the mayor's authority to be able to expend funds under a certain dollar amount, under 10,000. However, we had an opportunity where we're able to partner with the Lions Club for additional Christmas lights. You may have seen them along County Road 1776. They're the ones that have the three snowflakes, blue lights in the middle, white on top and bottom. The Lions Club has partnered with us to cover 50% of the cost, which was $8,500. So our cost is 8,500 and they've provided a check to the city for $8,500 to cover half of it. We've had a great partnership with the Lions Club to get those lights and banners between last year and this year. And they definitely have quite, quite a pop to them, so we're excited about that. Like I said, being that this is within. Like I said, being that this is within the mayor's authority, he was able to move forward with that, but I do want to bring it to counsel and make sure the counsel is, is all good with that. That partnership and uh, there where what we did in order to get those lights taken care of.
No, good call, a good uh, call out to the local Forest Lions Club for helping us out, just to beautify the street. A lot, you know, be able to, we had extra poles and we didn't have enough decorations. Now we do. That looks a lot better when you drive up and down seventeen through town here. So that's a great, great addition. So. I guess so. What do you want us to do then, Brent, except the motion that?
I, I think it, just to make sure counsel's good with it. If we get a motion of ex, expanding those funds and partnering with Lions on that. Um, I, I know it was within your authority there, but I want to make sure the counsel is good with it too.
So, but if somebody wants to make a motion to accept.
So moved.
Dave made a motion. Who did a second? Done, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, that motion carries. Let's move on to Jim. You got twenty-three.
Yes, as uh, we did the last one, I'll take team this one with Zach. I'll take care of the general engineering and design and Zach will give you a rundown. Kind of a year-end constructionist where we're sitting on that. So we'll hit the highlights here. Wall Avenue, working with Onsted Twitchel to identify areas of land that need to be purchased in phase one between County Road seventeen and the bridge. Uh, there was some um, interesting parcels of property. Along there that are going to have to be sorted out and we are working with Onsted Twitchel's uh, land division for that. Lakeview First Edition, which is south of eighty-first Avenue is taking. Uh, it's picking up steam again. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow on that project. Everything I gather is it will be. Uh, probably constructed in the next construction season. Uh, we touched on the two water projects. I had those listed here. Um, miscellaneous CWSRF, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Project update debt questionnaires are at City Hall for the mayor's signature. We have uh, projects for. Seventy-sixth Avenue Sanitary Sewer, sixty-fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer, Manhole Rehab. Horseshoe Bend, and then a connection to Fargo at Forty-Fifth Street. Uh, Transportation Alternatives Program Grants were submitted last Wednesday to MetroCock where they score them. And forward their ranking on to the DO, state DOT for their approval and funding. Uh, there are two projects that we put forth for were County Road seventeen Shared Use Path Phase Three, which connects. Sha, uh, South, Southdale Farms First Edition with the Roundabout where Phase Two leaves off. And the second was the Multi-Immodal Yield Street on Center Avenue with some pavement marking and some striping to delineate. pedestrian and vehicular traffic in that corridor. Um, Southdale Farms Third Edition, we talked about that earlier. We get plans and specs going, get that project bid. Terror Gardens Third Edition, we created the district at the last meeting. They weren't as far along with the. Uh, project cost to continue that with this meeting, but we will be shortly. And that project is anticipated to be, to be um. Probably constructed this summer. One other interesting thing is that Public Works Department is actually taking wastewater samples on a lift station number one. For COVID testing or testing for the presence of, of COVID. This is a partnership with, I believe, the. Department of Health or the Department of Environmental Quality and NDSU. So. We spent some time on Friday doing some calibrating of lift station number one to get some flows. And then staff was working today with uh, getting the amount of people that are contributing to that lift station number one flow. So that's kind of interesting. Interesting thing Public Works is working on. So. Um, any questions on any of those projects? I kind of breeze through them quickly, but um, hit the high points.
I think that was a list of stuff we've been talking about, so.
Okay, we'll run down, Zach will run down the construction stuff pretty quick towards the end and. Maybe at the next meeting, we'll have just a kind of a where everything stands at the end of the year for you. Just I'll have him make up a memo for you. For all the construction projects and, but you can give us a quick rundown because they uh, with this unseasonably warm temperatures, they have been, they have kept working.
Yep, so um, the Hundredth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Force Main, like we talked about during the change order. We're going to do a time extension there. Pretty much all the work is completed except for about sixteen hundred millennial feet of sanitary sewer force main pipe. Um, the pipe left to install is in the Maple Lake Estates additional. So that project um, obviously can't be completed though the electrical services are in the spring, but. They don't have a whole lot of work to do um, yet this fall. Uh, Lakeview Drive and seventy-ninth, sixty-third. They are substantially completed as of November seventh. Um, they have most of their punchless items done. There's a few left to do. But for the most part, um, that project is wrapping up. There will be a few items they have to do in the spring, such as seeding. But that's minor. So your Vistos is completed and um, one final detailed iron out there and then we can finalize that project out. Cub Creek First Edition is wrapped up for the year. With the exception of sixty-third street sidewalk, which will be completed in the spring of twenty twenty-one. Uh, Maple Lake Estates, they are still um, putting pipe in the ground on that one. Right now, they're about fifty-six percent complete, but um, all indications that I got, they're going to continue putting pipe in the ground for as long as they can here. So. They'll keep moving on that one. Southdale Farms First Edition is also substantially complete. Work remaining there would be. Um, the lift station startups, once there is power on site. Same thing with the um. With the light poles doing the startup there. Once there's power on site and they're all hooked up. Other than that, that project's pretty well, pretty well wrapped up. Uh, Lost River Fifth Edition is substantially complete with the exception of the change order work at the pond, which will be done in the spring. Uh, eighty-first, with the good weather we've had, uh, their initial plan was to install these storms sewer main up to the high school tie-in. They decided to keep going. They got all the storm sewer along eighty-first done. Um, no catch basins, but all of the storm sewer trunk line done. And they decided since the weather was nice to start on the sanitary sewer. So. Uh, they started work on that last Thursday, I believe, and they'll continue work on that through this Friday. Um, sounded like this Friday, Saturday was going to be their last day of construction for the year though. And I think. That about wraps up my stuff. Rudes Edition was completed um, and accepted. And that should be about it for me. Any questions?
One other project that is ongoing is Metal Lake Park Improvements. And I don't know if you've been over there lately, but they've got the. Ocky ring boards up. They've got the, some of the warming out structure up and then the dugouts are framed, framed in. So. Um, they had a little issue with COVID there for a couple of days last, I think it was two weeks ago. They had some. They didn't do much work due to COVID, but they are steadily progressing on that project. So. That one's got to completion next year. So just kind of an update for you.
Yeah, Jim, I was going to ask you on Metal Lake Park over there. Um, are they going to keep going until snow flies? Are they going to work all through the winter or what's the plan on, on the continuation of working on?
From what I gather, it's, it's a, it's a snow flies thing. If they do any work this winter, it might be in the, in their shop or something like that. It's. Kind of what I gather. We have a staff meeting tomorrow morning. I was going to find out some more on that.
All right. Anybody else got any other? Questions, comments? All right. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Uh, Brent, you got the next one, twenty-four.
Hey, um, I have good news items for you, hopefully. Uh, one I have listed here, alternate legal services. What that is, is update for you of. Uh, I reached out in consultation with our mayor here about uh, having. Alternate legal services whenever we have a situation where uh, Onsted Twitchel may have a conflict of interest. Uh, where they may be representing the other part, the other party. Uh, the prime example of this with uh, dealing with the diversion. We worked with a firm called Hoff Berry. Uh, of the Twin Cities. Um, when we were dealing with uh, our differences with the Diversion Authority. Uh, we have been approached from the Diversion Authority on having a. MO, memorandum of understanding when it comes to permitting or floodplain. Uh, and we anticipate that there's going to be other situations where we have. Uh, items that need legal review or counsel. Uh, and we don't want to put Onsted Twitchel in a conflict situation at all. Uh, I think it'd probably be in the best interest city to do that. I've consulted Lucas on that too and. Didn't have issues with that either. Uh, so I am working with Hoff Berry. To get a proposal to bring forward. We're not at that point yet, but I want to make sure you're aware of those discussions going on. Um. As for, say, engineer services RFQ, the status of that, uh, I've been working with Lucas. Lucas has created a draft of the RFQ. And I'm reviewing that and we'll be going through and uh. Getting that finalized or getting that ready for whenever counsel would like us to move forward with that RFQ. Another item is land use ordinance update or overhaul. Uh, Barrett has been working on that one. The deadline for uh, proposals was recent, or just the other week. Uh, we had a total of six responses before that land use over or ordinance update or overhaul. Uh, six responses is very good. Uh, to give you a comparison, I believe in Baric elaborate if I miss, miss it, but uh. I believe the county did theirs about a year ago. They did a RFP or RFQ for services. And they had two responses. So for us to have six is uh, very good. Uh, we have some work to do for reviewing those responses and. Um, we'll be doing that soon and then having a consultant interviews before we bring it forward to counsel. The last one, the most exciting news I have for you is tied to CARES Act funding. Uh, as you may recall, we were. Trying to work with the county to get requests reimbursed or request uh, funds from the county for CARES Act dollars tied to. Uh, deputy time or time with our deputies. Uh. We, the county did bring, at their last commission meeting before today, they denied our request. It was brought back to the commission today or this afternoon. And just before our meeting started, the commission did review that item and they decided to approve it. Um, so we should be getting uh, CARES Act dollars from uh, Cass County. Of basically reimbursing our costs of law enforcement personnel. Our request was for ninety-nine thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. I believe that request was fulfilled. Uh, I don't, I had a call from the county auditor just before a meeting and he. He mentioned the voicemail was around ninety, ninety-seven thousand, but he didn't have the exact dollar amount. So I'll be working with the county administrator here later this week or the county auditor. To get that exact amount, but like I said, that's good news. I is uh, uh, additional. You know, between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars for the city that we weren't. Expecting to get, we were hoping to get, but we weren't budgeting to get. Uh, but that's due to the CARES Act dollars. So.
That's good to hear. Cause I was wondering, you know, where that was going to land. So, good.
And when it was approved this time, our understanding was a five-zero vote. I'll confirm that, but. It didn't, it failed or they denied it last time in a three-two vote. They also had a change in their commission. Uh, which the new commission started today, but it was a five, our understanding is a five-zero vote, but uh, that's good. If that's the case, so.
Yeah, good. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Thank you much. So I'll go on to portfolio reports. Um, I just got to bring up, we had been talking, I know we've had a couple of meetings about this with the HBA and there's been some internal meetings about the monotony. Uh, ordinance that we were talking about for planning and zoning. Um, I think for now, we're going to, being we're going through this whole exercise anyway, of re-going through our ordinance and things like that. I'm just going to say we're going to kibosh that for now. Um, and let's go through our process and our ordinances. I don't really want to add or change or monkey around with it right now, being we're going to go through this exercise. Anyway, um, no use spending it where legal fees on that if we don't have to, being we're going to go through an ordinance update anyway. So. I'm just going to say that now, so you guys know that that's what's going to happen. We're not going to, not going to pursue that any longer at this juncture. Um, second thing I want to bring up, Santa's coming to town here on Friday. He's going to be over at the senior center from uh, two-thirty to seven o'clock at the senior center. The uh, Lions Club is sponsoring this. Uh, it's going to be a drive-through deal. Basically show up, we got cone, we're going to have cones and sitting out. Come on up with the car. We'll uh. Santa will be there with some uh, uh, treat baskets, treat bags, I guess they are, and we'll be handing them out. So. Uh, get a chance to see Santa here on Friday. Like I said, it's between two-thirty and seven o'clock and thanks again to the Lions Club for uh, sponsoring this and making it happen. That's all I got. John, I'll pass it over to you.
I, I have nothing, but I, I will just kind of go on your coattails and thanking the Lions Club. They are just. A heck of an organization and we're very fortunate to have them in the city of Forest.
I will concur with that. Uh, okay, Dave, what do you got?
Uh, I don't have anything, but I wanted to just uh, again, thank our employees that uh, work very hard and diligently for our citizens in this community and. And I know that we have uh, winter coming and uh, a lot of our public works guys are going to be working some long shifts at times and they do their best to keep everybody. Uh, all the snow moved and everything like that and just uh, be cognizant of that when uh, it does come time that they're working. Hard to do that and give them a little room or give them a break once in a while that they'll get back and get things fixed, finished up if they miss something, so.
Yep, for sure. Sounds good. Thank you, Dave. Chelsea.
Um, nothing really. I guess I would like to just comment um, for Dave and Brian and, you know, what they're going through. I mean, they were very hard for. For all of us as well and they, they volunteer a lot of time. I mean, there is a little compensation to be on city council, but. I, I don't think any of us are, are here because of that. Um, so. It's unfortunate. I think that you guys have to put all this effort into running again. But um, you know, I, I like being on here on this board with you guys and, and. Whatever happens, I do appreciate your guys' efforts.
Sounds good. Brian, you're up.
Nothing new to add.
Nothing new to add, huh? All right. Okay, well, with that done, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn. John makes a motion. Who says a second? Brandon's a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.